I get you in here. To sign in.
So first.
Yeah, yeah.
I guess you say what?
How you doing? You said, how you doing?
It just shows where we were talking about.
Have you everybody on the sign? Let's call the meeting order, please. There's item on the agenda consideration of the meeting minutes from September fourteen twenty twenty two. Anybody have any questions, comments?
I'll make much more.
I got a few changes. Okay, line two sixty motion to accept. With do we make any corrections? Says motion except with approved.
I don't know. With correction.
Yeah. Four twenty one. We have to pulling board because I've already. I'm pulling board, the consensus consensus is that the project does not require second review. And ninety eight. Liability by invoking. Should be invoked in the ball, not revoked it. Five. Should be asked, not asked. That's all. Does anyone have anything else? Is there motion to approve with corrections? Second, all in favor, aye aye. Business, site plan review in two subdivisions, application for site plan review, S P S P R twenty twenty two dash fourteen. Map one twenty four lot sixty six, Mark Gojian D B A F C L O N E L C and South Peak L L C. Reconfiguration of South Peak Resort. My ocean D B A F C L O N E L C and South Peak L L C applicant Mark version three sixty seven Main Street Farm of Mass. Zero three five six one. Property owner Mark version D B A F C F C L O N E L C formerly twenty three sixty five Rice Boulevard Suite two oh one. Now three sixty seven Main Street Calm of Mass zero two five four zero. Mark version D B A South Peak L L C three sixty seven Main Street Farm of Mass. Properties are all within South Peak Resort and in the general use district. I'm not going to read all the map and lock this. Proposal total of seventeen new lots will be created improvements to these lots extension of municipal water and soil lines. That extension of utilities will be required for the six lot subdivision. And will also require a site plan review approval. No such approval will be needed for the eleven lot subdivision as the infrastructure is in place. Application number one for subdivision proposals to provide portion of the lots listed above in one. Six lot subdivision in one six lot subdivision. Map one one eight lot thirty five. That one will lead lot thirty nine, map one two oh like twenty seven. Six new lots creator on Crooked Mountain Road be as follows. Map one eighteen lot thirty nine is cash zero five point eight acres. Cap one eighteen lot thirty nine dash zero six four one acres. Cap one eighteen lot thirty nine dash seven point three seven acres. Cap one one eight lot three nine dot dot zero eight point five acres. Map one one eight lot three nine dash zero nine four acres. Map one one eight lot three nine dash one zero point three six acres. Application for application number two for subdivision proposals to provide portions of lots listed above in one eleven lot subdivision. Cap one one eight lot eighteen point five five acres. Cap one one eight lot thirty five point four four acres. Cap one one eight lot thirty nine ninety five point seven one acres. Map one twenty lot twenty seven point three five acres. That one to one lot twenty one six six acres. Cap one two four lot six six twenty eight point two eight acres. Five new lots creator on South Peak Roads to be as follows. Map one one eight lot thirty nine dash one one point three seven acres. Map one one eight lot three nine dash point one two point three five acres. Map one one eight lot three nine point one three point six acres. Cap one one eight lot three nine point one four point three seven acres. One new lot created on Friendship Court as follows. Map one one eight lot thirty nine dash one point one five point six acres. Three new lots created on South Peak Road as follows. Map one one eight lot thirty nine point one five, the second lot with the same lot number. Point four seven acres. Map one one eight lot three nine point one six point four nine acres. Map one one eight lot three nine point twenty eight point four six acres. Some provide one lot into two lots creating one new lot on South Peak Road as follows. Map one twenty one lot one point zero one point three eight acres. Cap one two one lot twenty one point zero two point three eight point four three acres. One new lot created on South Peak Road as follows. Map one two four lot six six point zero one point four nine acres. Notice is hereby given according to the I R S A six seventy six four and six seventy six seven. That an application for site plan review approval for access road design including grading, grading. Utilities infrastructure for the six lot subdivision proposed above within the general use G U district will be submitted to the planning board during a regular meeting Wednesday, September twenty eighth, twenty twenty two. At six P M applicant Mark Gojian three six seven Main Street Farm of Mass. Old three five six one agent surveyor engineer Andrew Do Nate, Andrew J NATO P E Horizons Engineering Inc. Thirty four School Street, Littleton, New Hampshire, zero three five six one. Property owners Mark Gojian D B A F C A L O N E L C. Formerly twenty three sixty five Rice Boulevard Suite two oh one Houston, Texas. Seven seven zero zero five now three sixty seven Main Street Calm of Mass. Zero two five four zero Mark Gojian D B A South Peak L L C three sixty seven Main Street Calm of Mass. Zero two five four zero. Properties all within South Peak Resort and in the general use district. Map one one eight lot thirty five Crooked Mountain Road number one two two owned by Mark Gojian D B A F C A F C L O N E L C. Point four four acres map one one eight thirty nine. South Peak Road owned by Mark Gojian D B A South Peak L L C ninety five point seven one acres. Map one twenty lot zero two seven Crooked Mountain Road at number one twenty one. Own by Mark Gojian D B A F C L O N E L C point three five acres. See for this.
Thank you.
Put it something with the public.
Good evening. My name is Mark Gojian. This is South Peak. L L C. We're excited to be here tonight. We're excited that we purchased the property. And or moving forward with the plan that was originally proposed several years ago. In doing that, we after we purchased the property, we wanted to assess what was there and what core goals of the project. And we are really excited by what they propose and continue to move forward with that concept. Both working with town, working with Loon, working with the community is all going to be really important. And we're willing to continue to come in with, you know, to do what we can. But in the meantime, we felt this was a first small stab at moving the project forward. And the same manner that it has been moving. And to that detail, I'll let John speak to more short of what's the plan to this from us tonight.
So so I'm John Orizoka with Horizon Engineering, also here with Horizons is Andy Meadow. So Andy is the licensed land surveyor. Who provide prepare the drawings and is really going to do the presentation tonight. So Andy's got a pretty extensive history working at South Peak and can help explain. You know, the history as well as getting up to speed on the logic behind how we approach this subdivision tonight. So what's before you guys is a seventeen lot subdivision. Eleven of those lots are on existing roadways, frontage lots. That are served currently by existing water and sewer. And then we're proposing a six lot subdivision on a new cul-de-sac. Hence there come their lives, the site plan review. So overall, it's pretty straightforward project, but it's spread out amongst South Peak. Project areas, so it is a little bit confusing to follow. So I will turn it over to Andy to kind of walk through some of the logic and how the subdivision is presented. And then I'm kind of here to answer any technical questions related to the engineering.
Which sheet are you looking at?
So I'm on sheet S one. Thanks, John and Mark. So like John said, I I I started working for Horizons in two thousand and seven. The first project that I worked on was was phase one South Peak sixty seven lot subdivision. And I've been involved with the site the last fifty or sixty years. Little bit of history for the folks, most of you, I'm sure you're familiar with the site, familiar with what's happened over the last couple, you know, fifteen years. So South Peak was the original sixty seven lot subdivision was developed for Centex Corporation. Single family, single family lots and new roads and infrastructure that was built. Most many of those lots are built out, there are some that are still vacant. Since actually the project went through a north shift change. Around two thousand and seven or eight. We developed what we call the Crooked Mountain Woods subdivision. The Crooked Mountain Road. The G left was built about that time. And then back around in two thousand and eleven, a new ownership came in M D R. And we did some of these riverside lots further to the west. Down closer to the river on South Peak Road. And that was actually two phase subdivision. We did that in two thousand and eleven, in two thousand and fourteen. So what we're presenting tonight essentially is is an extension of that. That progression of building out South Peak Resort, Mark being the owner now. The two ownership entities are F C L O N E and South Peak L L C. When I put the application together, try to make it as 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 simple as I could for everyone. It is a little, it doesn't have to be as complicated, but there's a lot of tax boxes. But essentially, we're dealing with 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 Mark's ownership under these two entities, South Peak and F C L O N E. But it's it's South Peak land. So there are multiple tax parcels. Like Mark mentioned previously, what is a very, it's a very straightforward kind of a two part project. We want to subdivide eleven lots on existing road frontage on South Peak Road and on Crooked Mountain Road. And these are just, this is just available land. This is vacant land that for whatever reason wasn't part of your the previous subdivisions. And those eleven lots are very much in the in the. The mode of what previous. Landowners have done with Crooked Mountain Woods and with with the. M D R subdivisions in two thousand and eleven, two thousand and fourteen. So we're just, we're filling in some available space. There's there's decent land there. Secondly, we are proposing a six lot subdivision on the southerly side of Crooked Mountain Road. And. If you if you had chance to study the maps. What we're proposing there, there are already two lots that exist, two record lots from from two thousand and seven. We're essentially going to redevelop that area into this new lot configuration. So. What will have to happen is those two lots will have to be conveyed. To the underlying landowner, which is South Peak L L C. Essentially, they'll be merged back into the parent tract that we're going to re-subdivide that. So in a way, the six lot subdivision is is where there already are approved lots. We're just kind of reconfiguring them, adding a few more up back with an act with a new access road. So that new access road is what kicks us into the requirement of site planning because we're building new infrastructure. We have, we have prepared. Grading and road control and and utility plants for the very short section or a couple hundred. That's pretty much in a nutshell. It's it's kind of a complicated application, but it isn't once you kind of drill it down and stuff.
So you have both ownerships on one application?
Yes.
Any board members have any questions?
One of the goals of this project as well was to keep. In fitting with the land that was remaining. All those options of condo style buildings and different areas. We thought keeping with what was already existing. Meaning the single family lots down in the lower road. Stick with that concept. Look at combining one, you know, fourplex on the same amount of land. Try to keep all the single families, so there's a nice, you know. Continual street of similar style buildings and structures.
And putting this together, we went back and looked at the previous approved subdivisions. We 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 looked at the lot areas, we looked at the configuration. Like Mark said, kind of kind of doing the same thing. Lot sizes are very similar, most of these lots are. They're around sixteen seventeen ounce seventeen thousand square foot lot size, which is very similar to the phase one subdivision. Back in two thousand and six.
What side of these houses be?
There's going to be a range of houses. So as an association, we're working much closer now to. Really get involved with the process to what fits on a lot. So some of the things that we're doing in our new lots is designing more building criteria. So one of the reasons why we don't have lots that even are today ready for market that are already something about is we want to be clear. Here's where the driveway is going to come in that you can't have, you can't buy an X size lot and try to fit a two times size house. It doesn't belong on that. Looking to build a house of a larger size, we recommend this bigger lot over here. And as a different price point, if you're buying a smaller lot, you're going to be restricted by the association to fit a lot that's going to fit it properly. I think in the past, the previous owner would sell a lot without any care of what would end up being put on it. And the association was really run based off the initial guidelines. As we move forward in our process, we want to give much more clear buildable envelopes. And this is the style home. This is meaning when I say style, you can't fit a three car garage on that lot. That one lot might have a simple one car at max or, you know, there's no car. And we have some lots that we've actually worked to purchase back because they were so small. The houses weren't able to develop anything other than a small house that is eighteen hundred square feet. If you develop an eighteen hundred square foot house and it's done well, they can add and give another product mix that there's some good demand for. But if you try to put a four thousand square foot house on that lot and maximize it, you end up having the clear cutting and get away with, get away from where the core values of what our plan and I think the town's plan was for South Beach.
Okay, what's the basis of design for these houses as far as drainage?
So all the houses are going to need to conform to the ordinances of stormwater management. They're going to have to go through the same process that the existing lots will. The only difference between these lots and the previous lots that were in South Peak is there will be more rigorous. Association guidelines to make sure that when these lots are sold, they're sold in a manner that someone doesn't feel that they were misled. Where previously someone said, oh geez, I thought I could fit that by clearing more of the land or whatnot. We need to make sure that there's adequate spacing in between lots, that the amount of natural vegetation, not just rebuilt vegetation. But existing natural vegetations maintained. So there's not one clear cut. You know, now it's exactly this size to that size because all the lots are different sizes and shapes. So as a whole, the average house, you're going to see some of these lots with a potential three bedroom house. Some of the lots up that are larger with a nice land, they might have additional, you know, bedroom count or sizes. So it could be a twenty fifteen hundred square foot house or eighteen hundred square foot house to a four or five thousand square foot house. It needs to be the right fit for the lot. And I feel like as an association, we need to make sure we're setting the right parameters so people know what they're getting and can know what to expect with the neighborhood as a whole.
You're still in charge of the association?
Absolutely. So we're going to be working to just enhance that as we move forward. So one of the things as an association, we realized early on that, you know, we wanted to assess this, we bought it, there's a lot going on. Now, as we're getting more involved, we're hiring more local staff that is going to be helping and assisting to make sure things are being done. So we can make sure that the homes that are being, you know, permitted with their land use permits are abiding by what was designed in the stormwater manner. Then we're enforcing to make sure that things are getting addressed. That if someone says they're not cutting trees down at the end, we don't show up and say, wait, what happened to other trees? It's almost easier for the excavator to fit around back if we took those mature trees. It's, you know, there's, there's going to be rules and regulations to say, no, we understand that foundation had to be poured this way in a manner that didn't take the trees. And those are just simple, you know. Concepts of what we're trying to make sure we can do as an association to be, you know, and I don't want to say over strike. But we need to make sure that there's a lot of guidelines and rules to maintain the integrity of the whole master plan as a whole.
Any board members have any questions? Paul?
Mark, these eleven lots that you're going to be building that are not part of that little small subdivision. How much of those lots will be taking additional green space? From the previous plan?
So we're going to be well, you know, based off what we've, the calculations we've run. So we're going to be well, you know, based off what we've, the calculations we've run is so much less green space than other concepts from what we can see. So for example, these lots, we looked at some of this land and I'm specifically talking about what you could do with that parcel of land by putting that single unit on there in keeping with the bylaws and the town ordinance of what a single-family lot is. We're, it, it, you're not using a lot of space relative to this, relative to the project.
So you, so you won't be taking any additional green space by creating these eleven, new eleven lots?
Well, they'll be different every, every expansion, whether how small or big, will be in essence, using green space, right?
Right. But you have, you have an original plan that, that shows all of these lots, other lots that are on here. These new ones that are highlighted, darker gray. Those are new lots.
So, so I guess we go back to that. Based off the master plan, we're well below the green space in all of the plans that we're proposing and continuing with. Is going to, you can either increase green space over the overall project. So every time we do another subdivision, there'll be less green space than what is on the ground today. Obviously, right? But there'll be, it's in less than, we're keeping in the same concept of the original master.
So you're, you're creating new lots and you're going to have less green space?
Well, yeah, but that's what the master plan contemplated, right?
Well, that, that's, that's my second question.
So the master plan, the master plan contemplated ongoing development there. It had a certain green space set aside requirements for the project as a whole, right? That was, I think, agreement in the master plan. So as more lots are developed, obviously, that's going to reduce the open area, but at some point there's a maximum development footprint that can happen. I don't believe, and Derek Licks here, um, as well, um, attorney for South Peak, he can speak to the master plan approval side of things. But from my understanding, and this is my understanding of it, the master plan did not contemplate specific locations of that green space. Didn't say the green space is here. It said, you have to have this much green space as part of this project. And I think at this point, we're not even moving the needle on that with these small number of initial lots that the project's doing.
So the, and that leads me to my second question about green space, I mean about the master plan. Do you intend to file an updated master plan, um, to show all the different changes that you, you're speaking about here tonight? I mean, is that something?
Yeah.
So that, so it, it will address all the, the different needs and the different things that could or could not arise from it, like traffic or, or water pressure, fire.
I think we're still working in the framework. We haven't deviated from the framework of the approved master plan. So the master plan, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, but the master plan was basically a blanket approval for the density and the, and the water and the sewer and the traffic and all of that stuff was contemplated in that master plan approval. So there's no need, we certainly, the, the plan is going to be updated now as we do ongoing subdivisions. But the actual master plan approval doesn't need to be updating, updated at this point because we're not deviating from that.
And we are, as far as the transparency of what we're trying to create, we're in the process of trying to finalize a concept plan, right? That is exactly what the master plan intended for. So we wanted to make sure that there's going to be a mix. So there'll be a mix of smaller condo building, smaller rent, you know, a common, you know, residential accommodations for the weekly person that's coming in to ski, CO services, um, restaurant retail in this village area, um, tremendous amount of ski trails and open space and access to the public, all the things of that master plan. What we realized after we purchased it is it's a good master plan. This is a good project. It just needs to be put forward in a manner that is continuing on what the goal was. So at first it was a lot of single-family lots going on. Our next proposal to the town would be just, we're working on right now, trying to get ready for a small condo subdivision. And not single-family lots. As we progress, we want to keep with the exact concept and what the master plan outlined. Anything, anytime we deviate from that master plan, if we didn't want it, if we chose to go a different direction, we understand we'd have to come back and update that master plan with the board. Does that answer?
Yeah, kind of. I mean, Carol, does the town have a copy, updated copy of the master plan in South Peak? Because I know at one time, you had said the, the final.
We have a draft.
We have a draft. We do not have a signed copy of the master.
We have never had, well, not since I've been here for ten years.
So what we could provide moving forward, I mean, there is the old master plan. We can, we're happy to give an updated master plan that, and we can have a bigger picture concept. What we're trying to make sure as we move forward in the process, one of the reasons why we're coming with a smaller project to start is we didn't want to move forward with a, hey, let's revisit the master plan. Meaning we want to keep with the master plan. We want to, we want to be transparent with it, but we want to keep with the master plan. We're not looking for, we know we have a thousand eighteen units. We had talked with, um, Ray about doing a chart and we've come up with a plan and we can hand these out where it says, you know, already, units already built, ninety. You know, units available to be built, eighty, meaning just, you know, as soon as it's subdivided, it's, it's available. We need to count that, even though it's not built yet. Meaning if the homeowner comes in and puts, applies for a permit, then it would be built. Removed units, meaning in this plan we're removing three. And then number of units used, or number of added units, seventeen. Then number of units used, one eighty-four. Total number of approved units in the master plan, a thousand eighteen. So leaves us with eight thirty-four. One of the reasons why we wanted to create documents during these initial projects, and it was Ray's idea, which I think is a good idea. He goes, we need to keep something that we can have easy language, if not every project's weight. How much are we at now? What are we doing here? That we've got like a, I'm going to call it a cheat sheet. So every time we know, hey, this plan changed, these two lots went to this, can add those back in, but we added this condo development, just as there's forty condos in the project now that were already previously developed. If we propose another forty units, that says, here's the forty, here's our number. So as we're working down, the board, the town, the community as a whole can see where we're at with the process.
I think maybe the answer to your initial question follows, the, the master plan did not designate specific open space, like a traditional subdivision, you'll have your open space and it has an area and you can't touch it. Um, if you look at the previous subdivisions, none of them designated open space. They, they just simply, the master plan gave, gave the developer permission to build so many units within ultimately like three hundred and ninety acres of land. And we're infilling that master plan, um, and, and like, and like Mark said, we're not even moving the needle right now. There's a lot of green space, I mean, three hundred and something acres, but there was never in any of these previous approvals, it was never a designated green space area that said, this is your restricted open space.
So as you have seen, as you've seen Loon's proposal of what they're looking to do, if you can see on the back of those six lots, that whole area, there's, you know, a twenty-six acre parcel, twenty-six acre parcel that will have, you know.
Correct. I mean, I, I, I understand what you're saying. I'm just, when you look at a map of like this, um, you have all your green space and certain areas, the majority, you, you have a bulked up. And obviously it's your development, you can do what you want, but I would think, you know, we have developments where we're trying to allow more green space infilled in between the houses so it doesn't look like a cluster. You know, so it's not, so, so it's not, you know, just one big housing mass thrown down there. The, um,
And that's why as an association to, to kind of comment on that, we're, as we move forward, why we're getting more involved with the process and how we market the lots. We don't want people to come think, okay, we can clear cut this whole street now. This is how we're going to get it. We want to be really clear that, okay, there's a fifteen-foot buffer, then a fifteen-foot buffer, but that's not just of a setback to a house where you're going to clear in between it. You now just have grass. We want to make sure that there's natural buffers that throughout this process that where our initial plan is really keeping with what was previously done. Not if we were going back and we had the whole neighborhood as a whole, we might have rethought out this lower road. But at the moment, it's so set up that way that the land, and I spoke to some of the previous owners and team, when they said, oh, we were thinking we could fit this down there. Doesn't, you don't want to have a random, you know, let's keep some continuity with what there is, but deviating from what was previously done, we want to get more involved in that process. So there is green space between houses and there's not that open.
Well, typically, e- even, even in the, the older master plan, there was a subsection where it was the architectural guidelines for um, what the houses were going to be, um, what the plans were going to be, how, how much green space there was going to be allowed, where the driveways were going to be allowed. And I think that, that's all part of the importance of an updated master plan is that as you go to make your changes, I mean, master plan, just like a, a CIP, it's, it's, it's a, it's a document that changes with your, your, with the developers wishes, you know, so, but I think what, what a master, updated master plan does is that it allows the town to be able to see where you're going. So when they're making their CIPs and when they're, you know, and all these different projects are being looked at, they can say, oh, South Peak is changing some things here, but you know, and granted, it only has a certain, there's only a certain amount of water you can have, there's only a certain amount of sewer you can have, we understand all that, but you may say, we want to do that faster. We may want to do that, you know, in a certain way, that's going to require pumps or a bigger tank, like you're looking at, all of those things. The fire protection, you know, that, so, so all of these things are looked at as a master plan is, is updated, you know, and revised. And I think, I mean, the other question I have is, with, with regards to master plan, Carol said, we don't have a signed copy. Do you have a signed copy of a mess, of a master plan for the current South Peak?
So the short answer is we have a copy of the master plan as approved. Signed along with the development agreement executed by the town, which references the master plan and recorded with registry. As, as recently as last November, the select board affirmed that master plan and that agreement. Um, and acknowledged that it's in effect and acknowledged its terms. Let me give you just, if you give me about two minutes, I think I can give you some.
What's your name again, Sarah?
I'm s- I'm sorry, let me do introduce myself. Can you try to shout one if you don't mind on your sound? My name is Derek Lick. I'm with a law firm out of Concord, solely in Paulist, and helping Mark both when he acquired the parcels and also as we dig down deep, this what occurred, what's left. And that's given us a little insight working with Mark as to how this all took shape over the years, working with Andy Franklin's help with the engineering side as well. Here's the way I look at this from the thirty thousand foot view that may be helpful. In two thousand and six, when the original developer for this site came to the town, into the planning board, essentially what this said was, we want to do a master plan of, and it's actually a cluster division, it's a cluster subdivision development. It is going to be a mixed use on this acreage. And what the idea was, was to take all of the land that was available, all at once, and look at it basically all the way across here. All of this land, which was essentially three hundred and, between three hundred and sixty, three hundred and ninety acres. And instead of looking at it piecemeal and saying, okay, for this ten acres, what do we need to do? And for that twenty acres, what do we need to do? The agreement reached with the town is we're going to look at it as a whole to determine how much density we can allow as a whole in the development. We're going to determine what kind of wastewater frequency as a whole for the developments, what we need in the development. And at the outset, that was agreed upon by the parties through engineering laws. Um, were a, a couple of things for, and what's important for this discussion is they reached, we looked at all the density, they said, what is required by town code today? And how much density would be allowed? And you knew the math and there was a thousand and eighteen units that were going to be allowed on this development and over the course of multiple years. And I think they were allowed a twenty-year timeframe to develop. Most recent agreement with the town confirming the agreement extended that starting twenty years is when that was signed. So it's through twenty thirty-nine. Mark and his team having another twenty years to fill in the development as envisioned, up to a thousand and eighteen units. So this tonight is just really a baby step in the next, next phase. He's shown up, he's taken over the project. We literally, um, took a look at each parcel based on the tax card, you know, which ones are approved, which ones are subdivided, how many have we used? And, and if indeed he were to sell all the properties that currently are subdivided up there, the total that could be used as of now are a hundred and seventy parcels, actually a hundred and eighty-four total parcels. Is what's, what's developable right now based on approvals coming before the planning board. And if, as of now, if you approve this tonight, you would still have eight hundred and thirty-four units available to build under the original agreement, the original master plan. So on your point about green space, I get it. You want to make sure that as we fill in, there's green space left. There's a couple of things to point out. One, there are, there's green space along the river that's set aside. But more importantly, at the beginning, when they looked at this, they tried to determine how much green space do we need? And they did it by backing into a density calculation. This is how much you could build and have sufficient green space under our rules. And so that's how it gets there. That's why there's no set aside for any particular piece. This is going to be green space, that's going to be green space. It was already predetermined as a whole. With respect to water and sewer, those were also addressed at the front end. And when the town executed its agreement last November, they confirmed that there's plenty of sewer capacity for the thousand and eighteen units. There needs to be no improvements as we go on to make sure that ramps up and covers, it's already been covered. And the original developer actually pitched in for some funding to help that time, I guess, upgrade the sewer water treatment plant, I think is what was going. And when it comes to water, there is an issue with water. There's a storage tank issue that Mark has addressed now um, to the satisfaction of the town. Frankly, he was ready to put in the tank that the town needed, was agreed upon. But the select board is interested in making a bigger tank to help service other parts of the town. And so essentially he's delayed, agreed to delay doing that, and instead would contribute to the town for that larger tank, if that's the way the town wishes to go. My takeaway from all of this is not to get into the great details, but is to say this. At the beginning, they gave us a lot of thought and they knew we're going to have a thousand and eighteen units up there at some point. It's going to be mixed use, some single-family homes, some condos, some hotel. But we know we've got it covered with respect to these, these issues. Um, and here today, we're now just starting to, the process is starting to fill in. And I expect that over the next several years, what's going to happen is you'll come in with some condos, we'll fill in some more space. They'll come in with some commercial or hotel or whatever he decides to do that follows the master plan. All that was a vision. And again, we'll just sort of, we're keeping count now of the units. Say, how many have you used? How many have left? How many you used? How many you have left? And depending on what he builds, it'll take up more or less space, but that's the idea. I hope I've taken up too much of your time, but that's the idea. So we do have a copy of this master plan. Which again, I would almost describe as a concept plan, is that here's generally what we're doing. It's a mixed-use development of a, of, it's got a lot of language, like, you know, a lot of pages explaining.
I would say.
That, that, that's right.
Yeah, we can, we can provide that in all those details.
But if he does, he goes, trying to ask a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I want a copy of that because I've been asking since I started in two thousand and thirteen for a copy of that master plan and I have not seen one.
We could provide a copy of the master plan. Everything to make sure that everyone's got that, which is helpful.
I mean, the town should have what you have, so that when it's talking about going forward.
And that's part of what this was too, is we had talked early on and some of the feedback we got was, hey, let's just, we don't, let's, let's not leave it up to saying, oh yeah, we have plenty left. We all know there's plenty left off a thousand eighteen, right? At this point, it doesn't take the calculations on this project. But it starts to create a good track record, right? So that way, if there's a question, you know, if one, you know, someone wants to go in and say, oh, how many units do they have left? They can go find the most recent approval of what the most recent project was. We're also trying to work with the town and where we're pushing to go based off of the, you know, water tank. We can't, you know, our goal is to work on the lower roads, work under nine fifty, because that's where we have at with pressure. So one thing we realized, we changed focuses, we were spending a lot of design time and energy at the Pemmy base. And then with the concept of the tank taking several years longer than just going in immediately and getting a smaller tank installed that would have allowed the proper pressure for South Peak. We realized, let's focus on this lower section and, you know, when I say, you know, make our goals and the town's goals and the South Peak master plan all align to accommodate everybody.
The original master plan, two thousand, what does it show this particular partial parcels being?
There was a combination of condos and they changed it. Like at one point this was condos and then this lower section, then they switched to single-family lots. Our master plan is keeping the village in the exact same spot the village was intended to be. So the single-family lots, long-term, we haven't looked at the exact buildings and the abnormal lots, but they'll go more to the, I don't know if we want to use workers, right, or looking at the mountain from the base, all the way to the right, little bit in the middle, the village really taking up the primary kind of core, if you simplify it, the parking lot area right now. Kind of core, if you simplify the parking lot area right now, estate group. If you don't mind, I can show you, this is from my copy, you know, this is from my copy of the, it's called an lister, Lester to master.
Yeah, this is essentially the master plan, um and it is color coded, so that that the area we're working in now was. Was proposed low density residential, one to four, I'm saying that means units per acre, one to four units per acre.
Is that in here?
It's it's not in the application.
But we're again, I guess, if the town would like, we could include dropping it off in several copies of all the documents that we have that. You know, from the ones that are at the registered deeds that are confirmed with the town, this is what the master plan is, here's a map that are referencing it. I think it's good that everyone sees that and it's not a surprise. Um so anytime we can be of assistance to confirm and make charts and do this, we want to do that. Because I think it's gonna make the project an easier, successful project to not have to always go back to one day.
Well, I think one of the things that happened previous, which that's nothing to do with you, was that, you know, you've seen that the. The amount of bedrooms per unit.
And the size of the houses on a lot.
And the size of the houses on the lots were in the past have not been built per the master plan and per what was. Uh said that South Peak was going to build. So, I mean, that that's that led into how much water was used prior to before the tank had to be built. Um, I mean, I don't know how the selection can can say that they have enough water and sewer capacity for the thousand and eighteen units, because. That, you know, that sewer plant, if you put a thousand, if you put the rest of what you have down there, that sewer plant is gonna be way out of. I mean, and that's a that's a that's a eight to thirteen million dollar project currently, so. I mean, if you were to just come in tomorrow and say, hey, look, we're we're just gonna go gray guns and build, the town would have to. Float a bond to do something to be able to get this sewer plant and whatever water system. And I think that's part of what the master plan does too. So the question about the water and sewer would be. When are you going to be doing this and how how how's it going to affect the town? So because. Right now, nobody knows anything, I don't think.
So let me give, I guess, our master plan, right? We realize the importance of this project being sustainable, both short term and. Long, so we need continual growth in South Peak. It can't be this long, like, hey, this year, we're gonna do nothing. We'll be back in two years and then it sells another owner. We're here, we're vested. That's very important. The more, we're not just committed to South Peak, but we're committed to Lincoln as a town.
We have heard that before in our previous developments.
I understand your skepticism. And I would say that what you'll see with us, one of the things we're trying to do too is operate in a manner that's not. Run according to the understanding, taking the time to understand what we have, what was approved. And how we can do it in a manner that's gonna be not only good for the residents of South Peak that are already enjoying it. But going to be sustainable to have continual growth, meaning if you just go guns blazing, we say, here's a five hundred lots and they're everywhere and they're all this. It's not gonna be a product that people are looking for, it's not gonna help the town, it's gonna be too much construction, there's gonna be not enough infrastructure. As we're continuing to go, we think our plan might be a ten year plan to get to where we're going. And as we're doing that, we're gonna see that all the additional homes being built. You know, I'm commenting back on the costs of potential infrastructure. This is a project that can work really well hand in hand with the town as, say, there's another between the lots that are already being developed now. The taxes that are being generated, that things are going in a manner that the town can plan ahead, so they're not caught off guard. But what we're committing to, not just tonight, but through the project. Is we understand the master plan. We're not here asking to say, hey, that was then, this is now, we wanna now do. A B and C, we're saying, we understand, we've read, we've under, we've got it, we've reaffirmed it, there's a thousand and eighteen units, there's gonna be a mix. Yes, right now, we're here for single family homes. I can tell you that the next plan that will be coming for, that we're very close on, I was. Open to have it almost at the same time, but pushing everybody to keep moving, is to have, it's just, it's condos, right? So some duplex, some, you know, five unit attached condos. As we move forward, we're going to have to look at two things. Where are we going next? We're not gonna be able to get to this other single family homes for a while, because the way that those are designed, both off the original master plan, as you see. We're gonna get into the main village area and we're gonna need to start focusing on more condos or. Vertical product where there are smaller units, so it's gonna be a different product next. So as we move forward, we're gonna continue to move the development according to the master plan. And be very transparent, what are our goals and where are we focusing?
So you made a comment that. At past meetings, that all your um buildings going forward would have no more than four bedrooms. Tonight, you're saying that that's gonna change.
At the moment, I don't want to comment that some of the larger lots up on Crooked Mountain. We understand that the bedroom, so we haven't, we haven't been approving more than four bedrooms, we're sticking to four bedrooms, we want, we're trying to stick to the right amount of bedrooms and space per lots. As we're deviating, if we're gonna bring other units below, meaning we want to make sure that. The average is gonna be below, meaning I don't want to limit at the moment some lots that we haven't even touched. Being some of the bigger lots that are up on Crooked Mountain that are already previously subdivided. I don't want homeowners to get cute with them either, where it's four bedrooms, but an office sitting down and.
And what we're.
And a library, so we'd rather be transparent with the town too and knowing, hey, this is. This is a bigger home, it's gonna be a four thousand square foot house, it's a huge, it's a nice lot, there's nice space between the house next door. We're also here looking at this three bedroom unit and this four bedroom unit and this two bedroom unit for another project, and as we progress, we. Both the land, both our concept and the master plan doesn't call for all these big, large, single family houses. That was what was the easiest product for them to just put up and not do absentee. We're focused on the big picture, and one of the things that we're doing as a developer too is, we're not just focused on South Peak. There's things that are in town, we understand there's numerous things going on. So we want to make sure that our project is sustainable and the town is, everyone's affected in a positive manner.
So is your intention to build this up within ten years to reach thousand and eighteen units?
Yes.
See, we also have any other questions?
Yeah, I do. So does anybody else have any? So I think that in looking at the. The past approvals and stuff, I mean, there's there's been some changes from. The four bedroom, what was gonna be four bedroom to having bigger ones uh subsequently using more water. Um and that is supposedly being addressed by the new tank that's gonna be put in there. I'm not a a big proponent of promises, because you never, things do change and, you know, until it's end, it's not, I mean, it's not available to be used. I mean, you take a look at how many hands that South Peak has changed into, and you're just another person that's come up and said, yeah, we'll do that for you. Look, it's um, the town is not gonna realize that, first of all. The other thing is that, you know, the, so so I see that as a as a something that hasn't happened, it needs to happen. I also see that, you know, when the original development was approved. Um and it was, I think, in the developer's agreement, um it promised fire protection for everybody that was there currently that was gonna be built. And today you have Hemlock, which has uh not adequate fire protection flow. I had a discussion with the fire chief two nights ago and asked him that question, and he said it was not adequate. Thirdly, I think something that needs to get addressed is the bridge. And you talked about that at the last meeting, but when I look at these things, so I'll I'll see a lot of traffic. I'm in property management business, so for me, I I work in Westwood and I see a lot of traffic going from. Heavy commercial traffic going through Westwood with the homeowners there, so and I hear people who have issues with it. But. You tell me that you're that you're working and and trying to do the best thing for for the town. I take a look at this and think, you know, here's three issues. And you're still developing and making money, but these three issues, which you were aware of when when you bought it, haven't been addressed. There's maybe they're starting to be addressed, maybe they've been discussed with the town, but they haven't been rectified totally yet, so. There's been other developers in town, and I'm not picking on you saying that you're one of those developers, believe me, I'm not saying that. But the, you know, the town has gone through some pretty significant hard times with developers, so, you know, seeing is believing. So when the thing, when it gets installed, or when the bridge gets fixed, or when the fire protection gets fixed, or when um. The water tank gets built for sure, or it's lit up with contracts and, you know, there's already, money's been appropriated, contract's been written. I mean, tho- those are for sure things, even when contracts are still, stuff changes, but, you know. The towns had to go on to go by the promises of others for years, and I just get concerned that. We keep going by the promises of others and then sometimes we get left behind. So it's not that I am anti-development at all, it's just that I kind of, through all the years of living in town, I kind of like to see the product first. You know, the things that are needed to support it, and then I'm right there with you, you know, I want to see the water availability, I want to see the fire protection. I want to see the 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 bridge that will take all the traffic and not have to go to uh Westwood. I want to see all those things first, and then go ahead, so I mean, build build what you're gonna build, you know, I mean, that's what I, go ahead, yes, go ahead.
So I understand your skepticism, especially with South Peak. One of the things happened, the previous owner was fighting that he didn't even have to put in a tank. One of the first things I did is I came to the town and said, hey, this isn't a debate, the tank needs to be put in. We then came to an agreement where we didn't just say, hey, we'll do this, trust us. We got quotes, and the expensive quote for me to put in a tank on the South Peak property was a million and a half. So we then put a bond for a million and a half, so the town has that money, so if I disappear right now, the town has got my million and a half that's put aside for that tank. I was trying to put the tank in so fast to show everybody, here we go, guys, we're good to go, and we were pushing forward on that tank. When the town came to us and said, hey, this is, we have a better plan, I said, great, this is what we want to do, let's work together. So as far as that, that'll handle the two, you know, the fire suppression when the tank's in the water, so we then. So as far as trying to execute that, I now share in your. Contract worry that things don't happen, tank conversation, because we put, we can't develop above nine fifty. Very, we can do technically with the water pressure, we have several, a few left to go, but it's not really development, right?
Does the status of the tank? I don't mean this.
I can't, but the town could comment on it, so as of now, that we have, they were, they asked for an extension. I've tried to make it so it's clear that, hey, we can't let this go forever, we need this in, because we do want to develop up above nine fifty. So we are amongst everybody extremely concerned that that won't happen as quick as possible. We're doing everything we can for, the town came, asked for an easement, because the Forest Service is needing an easement to get through our property. We not only expedited that process, but offered horizons on South Peak's time to provide information, surveys, updates. Helping to push that forward so the town could get their preliminary application in before the services faster.
We haven't have a member of the town board selected here, could you give an update on that tank, Jorge?
Yeah, the 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 tank is in process of, in the approval process, right now it's at the Forest Service level. Um as Mark just said, the um.
And how long, I I just want to kind of clarify a little bit as you're going along, so how long does Forest Service level intend to take? Do they give you any idea?
Jack?
It was, it was heard before the small project for the National Forests, two evenings ago. And we were waiting a decision at that point in time.
So once that's, once they give that decision, that will, that will be all of the Forest Service needs? The town needs from the Forest Service, I should say.
Well, if if they give that decision as a yes with no conditions, that's all we need.
That's all you'll need.
Correct.
The money is there from Mark and the money is there from the town to construct this.
We have the money.
The engineering?
Is engineering yet to be done, um because the engineering wasn't done. Um knowing that the Forest Service might say, yes, but move it over here, yes, but it needs to be further from this, yes, but so. No, we didn't spend a whole bunch of money designing it to be built in a place that the Forest Service said you can't build it, okay? But but go- going back to to Maxi, one of the things we needed to even get to the Forest Service meeting was an easement. That easement needs to be as wide as a road, which is gonna have some twists and turns as it climbs through the through the hilly contour. But we don't know where the road is gonna be either, so again, what Mark did to expedite this is he gave us an easement from here to here. And said, there's your easement, you can get to the tank, then as the road gets designed, we're gonna redraw the. The what we're gonna call the final easement, the permanent easement um to be to be the road plus obviously, you know, ditches off the side or whatever. So so it's been a very cooperative arrangement um for him to not only postpone building the smaller lower tank. But then to facilitate all of the Forest Service and town and engineering needs, again, using his engineers on. His dime to 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 get that easement and surveying and everything else done.
I understand this.
So we're not in public comment yet.
I I mean, we get.
No questions.
We've gone through, we've gone through eight. Eight years on one project up a forest ridge. I would hate to see a tank that the town needs and that Mark needs. Take a lot longer than it needs to be. I'm not sure neither one of you want to see that either, but.
So maybe one point, so these lots that we're proposing tonight are below nine fifths, so they are served. And the fire chief will obviously need to review and concur with the plans, but our proposal tonight, the current subdivision, so history aside. The proposal tonight and the subdivision application that's here, this package of subdivision applications, it's here, there is adequate water to serve these, there's adequate fire flow to serve these. So that's not in question on these lots, the bridge is is functioning as it is today to provide access to these lots. There's adequate water allocated in the master plan agreement, adequate sewer allocated in the master plan, so that's really, so we understand there's bigger picture items that need to be worked on here, but. Really want to keep the focus on what we're talking about with our current application.
I understand that, but if I take a look at your current application, which currently have. South Peak is currently noncompliant with your permit, because you don't, you are not providing fire protection on Hemlock Drive. At one time, we talked about making that happen as a result of systems, that, I don't know where that went, but I do know that.
Well, that's a new lot, so the, that was if we added, the reason the systems came up was if we added anything additional above nine fifty, we'd have to put in the system.
Not when we talked, I was saying, I said, look, can't you do something else? And you said, well, yeah, we can look at systems or something like that, anyway, so. Your 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 permit requires you to have fire protection on all the lots, for 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 those lots that are built, and you don't have that. So you're really not complying on that. I understand where the water tank's going, and I and all I'm saying is that. I I believe it when I see it, is what I've learned to be and and after living in this town for for so long. The bridge, I think you've got some issues there that you need to tend to, you're you're looking at building, continuing building, God bless, I hope you do. But I think that you, that that there's some issues with the flow of the traffic, what kind of traffic's flowing to current residential properties. And uh and I and I think you need to, you know, you need to look at that and and tend to that.
So I will say, Mr., I wanted to get back to the three things you mentioned, you want to see things before you're gonna believe them, right?
Yep.
I would ask that throughout this process, as I continue to try to work in a really collaborative way with the town. That as much as your skepticism with the other developers, let my actions speak louder than are my words, and. I will, I've already called Royal Tanner, we're working on engineering study to confirm what the bridge can hold. So I could redirect traffic that are larger vehicles not have to come around. I heard that from our last meeting, and I can't comment enough to commit to it without the engineering report. But I am telling you that we're already looking down that road, that I can assure you, you'll see it throughout these next meetings, I don't think this is, this is just beginning. But as far as the tank goes, you can double check that we're pushing just as hard as anybody to try to make this happen. That's why that easement was so wide, because I said, I don't want to have to slow this up, whatever I can do to help move it forward. That easement's a legal document, that's not like a, hey, you said this, you can go back on it, it is a signed. Move forward, the one point five million dollar, well, that's like a legal, I I'm doing it right, because I don't want to be ever in a situation where. We're not fulfilling the obligations of what the master plan is.
Well, you live on Hemlock, so I mean, you go, the fire protection should be as important to you as it is anybody else, but.
I.
I mean, you know, when when you take a look at the 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 bridge and the fact that the gate's there. Um there there's some, there's. Um, there, there's some, there's some other issues with that as well, I mean. If the fire trucks can't get from the town's fire trucks, there was fire at your house, they would have to go all the way around. Through the gate, and if they had to call. For support from Woodstock or some other fire department. Those other fire departments don't have the fall, so they would have to do something to keep that gate open. So, there are some issues in that regard, um, that probably should be looked at prior to. Maybe not prior to, but while you're looking at the other things. And I think that, you know, I, I think it would go a long ways, what? Like I said, I, I, I think the issues are the, the bridge and the traffic flow, if you take a look at the traffic flow. Through the FDIS, through the master plan, through the, the traffic studies that were done. That gate was only supposed to be set a little mountain to go both ways. That was supposed to be so, so it could go that way, or, or a contractor could come through across this way.
I'm happy to, I'm happy to keep looking at it, so one thing, the reason why I mentioned the, the bridge and Royal Tanner. When I talked about it last meeting, I said, I'm gonna look into that and keep it moving, it's only been two weeks, I haven't got everything back, I can't get everyone to get it. So are there any plans to make improvements to the bridge? At the moment, we're trying to assess the bridge, the, the absolute long-term plans, there's going to need to be. Improvements to the bridge, so we're not sure what those exactly are, but we've already engaged engineers in our work into that process.
Well, there's an engineer, I mean, it, it was done by the DOT, I mean, it was, it was recently revised, right?
You mean evaluating the bridge, they've done some repairs, I believe.
Right, they did repairs, and repairs came as a result of, um, an inspection that was done, and I think.
It was two thousand fourteen.
Two thousand fourteen, and the DOT was heavily involved in the work that had to be done. Um, on the bridge, or the state was.
Yeah, well, I think now, if I'm not mistaken, there. Royal Tanner is looking at the bridge right now, the status of the bridge right now.
Well, that's why I said.
It's been two thousand fourteen, it's been a while.
And what I can tell you is that I don't want to let the, the, the big picture of all the things like working closely with the town and giving the easement. Doing the water tank, and I didn't want to propose our first subdivision. Of an area that says, hey, you're subdividing this above nine fifty, does not adequate. We're trying to keep this as simple as we can, as we're working diligently through all the concerns that both you and I share.
I mean, right, so, like I said, I, I.
I was in the, in the board, day one of the development. When syntax came in, whatever you want to call them. They said there would not be any, any development, so the any house lost above nine fifty. But to add it, for the town, or the developer, or both, must have been houses built above that level, where there isn't any fire protection. You're supposed to put in holding tanks down below, set fire protection, according to the original agreement. That when it first came in, two thousand six, two thousand eight. If you says that, but right now we have houses above it, they're already put in, I don't know whose fault that is, the developers or the town?
And I think that instead of looking back at pointing fingers at who did what, because the truth of the matter is, it shouldn't have been done, I'm not here proposing it myself, right? So I'm not proposing doing another subdivision up there before the tank. What I can also say is, we did work to increase the pumps, so the pressure is much better. So we did what we could with the existing system to make it better, and as a new developer here, the old developer. Whether the town approved it, or he got it through, however he did it, he did it without putting in the tank. I not only am not proposing things now, even after I posted that, but I'm trying to put in the tank. And if we didn't work hand in hand with the town, we'd be getting close to tank construction right now. And I'd be looking like a hero, because it's going in, so it's a hard thing, because on one hand, we really want to work well. But we also know in doing a larger tank, it slows it down.
And I understand that, i- i- it's just that, because it slows it down.
Hold on, go ahead, Joe.
I think you're doing a, a good thing, we, we going above it. But we are getting off track on the other stuff, to what you came in for the proposals tonight, which you mentioned. We should concentrate what we have a force to decide on, and go back after this is approved or disapproved, and discuss the other parts.
But when you do a, when you come in for site plan review, Joe, as you well know, the whole site becomes up for review. So it's not just, we're not talking here just about the eleven, the eleven new lots and the six. Six lot subdivision, we're talking about the effects it could have on everything.
I, I think the, the point that I'm seeing here is that there is a path forward for this tank.
And I believe there is.
And, again, I think to Mark's point, the path is a little slower, because Mark's working with the town to make, to come up with a mutually beneficial project for everybody. Because, you know, Mark called me up and was like, hey, I want to have a tank going next month, like, can you guys get this designed and bid, I'm like, ah. Alright, we'll do what we can, and then, we were, we were ready to roll to get a tank built for Mark. But that doesn't benefit the town as a whole, it doesn't, there's not, there's not that additional benefit, it would only serve Mark's development. So, this, this approach serves a lot, it's a lot better mutual. But, it slows things down, and again, what we're proposing tonight is not. It's not making the site less compliant, it's, it's a non, it's, it's un, it's, it's unrelated to the tank issue. Now, I understand it's part of the same development, but this concern related to the fire flows. In the higher elevations of this project, aren't, we're, we have adequate fire flow. Or the fire chief will confirm that for the prod, for the sites that we have right now, that's, and there is a solution.
Don't have that.
For our current, for our current lots, we do, they're below nine fifty. The kernels were proposed.
Correct, but you have lots up there above nine fifty that cannot be served by fire.
And what we're representing on that is, that's a separate matter from what we're discussing tonight. That is between Mark and the town. Being the select board now, that's where that stands to get resolved, and Mark is ready, I'm sure that if, if all of a sudden, Forest Service says, no way. We're not gonna allow a tank, and when Mark's gonna be like, call me up the next day and be like, John, design a tank, get this done, because I need a tank, because the town can't do it. That's what's gonna happen, so a tank's gotta go in for his development to move forward.
I mean, I'm not sure if you realize it or if you're aware of it, but we, this board received.
We've received letters in last year.
Letters last, was it last year? From several, I don't know how many.
About a half a dozen.
Half a dozen or so, of the homeowners that were on Hemlock, um, concerned about the lack of fire protection. So, to say that we sit here tonight and just throw those letters aside, because there is no fire protection for them. Really doesn't show that we're doing our, our, our duties, if, if we don't at least talk.
I'm not sure that's what we're doing, though, what we're saying is it's on.
Alright, hold on, old Jay.
That's just such an unfair statement. There, there's no one up there who's gonna say we're not doing anything, we have. One point five million dollars, and a signed agreement, and an easement. And an application before the Forest Service, that has nothing to do with these lots on the lower. If, if we deny these lots, it's not gonna get the tank built any more quickly than if we approve them. So, it's, it's totally irrelevant, and Derek, I don't know if you have the, the agreement that the town signed that, that. Related to that tank. In, in addition to him giving us a million and a half dollars. We gave him an assurance that this wouldn't be an issue, that you're making an issue, and you're the one who.
You can't speak for me.
What's that?
You can't speak for me. So can you tell us, tell them that I'm not gonna?
The town has agreed through, through a written document, that we wouldn't let this. Um, that we would allow the building to continue under the nine fifty, because it's, it's not affected, affecting. Um, the fire suppression of what is or isn't there already. We want to see it happen, that, that those become protected. We also know that in this. Temporary state, that has existed now for years and years, up on Hemlock, with inadequate fire protection. That number one, they increased the water pressure involving that, that is there, because they redid the pumps. And second, there is a way to. Shut a water up that hill, although not ideal. Not a long-term solution, that in the meantime, it's not like they don't have any fire protection. They have a very, uh, manual labor-intensive fire protection that will be replaced with a tank. Um, in, in the long term, but again, that has nothing to do with these, these lots on the low, it's not gonna make the tank go in any faster. With a million and a half dollars, it's unlike, you know, you're comparing to, to Forest Ridge. You're the one who always says we should be working with developers, we should be working.
I'm not saying we're not.
Working with a developer, and now, now you want to say you can't build anything else until you, the town. Gets this thing built, that's what you're saying.
Whoa, 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 have you heard me say they can't build? I said, these are some of the things that need to be addressed, I have once, and I said, I don't think you should build. These are the things that are on the table that need to be addressed. That's what I said.
I, I think.
Okay?
We haven't taken a vote yet.
Yeah.
He hasn't said, he's not gonna.
Yeah, I mean, I haven't said.
Dive into the lots that are here for tonight?
Yeah, let's, let's.
Yeah.
Is there a chance that the Forest Service won't approve the tank? I mean.
And I address this, because I drafted the agreement, just the way it's set up is this. Mark said, I want to build a tank. I got the money to do it.
I understand.
Would you hold off for a bit, because we may want a larger tank? And he said, yes, but, I'm gonna contribute only what I would put in for my tank, so he's now put that letter of credit into the tank. And he put a window of time on it, so he said, look, because now I'm gonna get held up. If I can't put this tank in for building above the nine fifty, nine hundred mark, let's put a cap on the time. And if you guys can't get your tank done, town, I get to go put mine, and we're moving on. So, there is a provision for that, but we're still, I'm still hopeful, I, I think the Forest Service.
What is the time limit?
So, my recollection is, is November of twenty twenty four. They asked, they asked for another year, and we gave them another year. It was initially.
They.
The town. The town asked for another year, and we gave it, so they gave it another year. So the timing, if we, was spelled out by their consultants and engineers, needed additional time, so I wanted to make sure they had the adequate amount of time to do it.
Okay, and your, it'll be on your own land, and it'll also take care of the fire protection issue.
Yes.
Right, the tank.
Okay, where's the million five, is it in town, just for town?
No, it's in a letter of credit, so it's being held in a bank.
That's fine.
So.
I guess that, I guess.
Alright.
I mean, I think there's some things you can, you can do to alleviate some of these things, the three things that I talked about, I think the bridge. Some of the bridge issue could be resolved, you're working on it, again, you're working on it, all these things take time, but. During all that time, people are still gonna have to be using Little Mountains Bridge and coming through Westwood. I think one of the things you could do as a developer is say, no. Only the heavier vehicles that have to go. Across the bridge, go that way, all other, all the other contractor vehicles and all the other stuff that can go across South Peak Bridge. To go across South Peak Bridge. I think the fire protection thing. I get that, old Jay, I did, I, I disagree greatly on that, because if you were one of the people that were up in those houses, and they had their children there. And they, and, and something happened to them, because the fire department couldn't get to them in time, you wouldn't be saying that. So, you know, it's, it, it does have to be talked about, and it does. Options have to be looked at, and, and ways to get this thing done faster, whatever it is. And I don't know what that is, but it's between a developer and the town, but those people that are sitting up there on Hemlock. They, they should be having that, the fire protection that they were promised, sitting in that hydrant on Hemlock Drive, that can't be used today.
I don't disagree with that, I'm just suggesting that approving or denying this project is not gonna change the timeline to solve that.
Well, I think, I, I mean, whoa. If it's twenty, if it's twenty twenty four before, before that tank gets put in. You can put a cistern in there, and, in a year and have it done. So, I mean, there are other options besides putting that tank in, to allow for, for better fire protection, at least. You know, some advantage, so I mean, those are the types of things that, that can help, so, and, and that's why I was telling Mark. I'm not against this development at all. Here, I just want to see it. Two things, I, I want to see it, so that the master plan is a plan that, that can help the town in the future. Do its water, its sewer, its traffic, all of that. And, and, you know, and, and then I want to see it so that. Everybody else around it is happy with it as well, now you're never gonna please everybody, but, you know, still. There, there's, there are people with concerns, and, and.
So let's.
We haven't addressed those concerns.
So why don't we move on to public comment? You can say, you can speak further after public comment.
I'll make most broken the public comment.
I'll second. Alright, I'll in favor, so we have quite a large audience, and I'll ask the town consultants, employees speak first, they have any comments?
Okay, I just wanted to tell you that, um, both Ron Beer, the fire chief, is on, so, and Ray Corberin. So, maybe we should, um, ask Ron Beer to comment.
Ron, we've heard a lot about fire protection.
Ron, can you? Join us or unmute?
Okay, sorry, I didn't catch the question.
Can you, we've had a lot of comments about fire protection, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, so what was said about Hemlock is true, you know, the hydrants don't provide the needed fire flow. But the town has negotiated with Mark. And in the interim, until the tank is put in, I have a plan on how to get water up to Hemlock. As far as the bridge is concerned, uh, the posting is. At fifteen tons, so really only the command vehicle can go over that, all the other trucks have to go to, uh. The town bridge, or Loon Bridge, as you call it, and come through the gates to get to South Peak.
And, and Ron, what about the, um, about the lots that are being created, or any of them? Um, above the nine fifty, or have issues with water?
I, I, trying to think, I don't have all the paperwork in front of me, but. Obviously, lots at nine fifty or above. That's finished build would not have adequate water pressure for potable. So anything below that should be fine, it would be on the gravity system. And then, as far as the high pressure zone in South Peak. The last I knew, and that was Tim Clark's decision prior to Mark Bagosian. He did open the valve at the, um, intersection of Hemlock. And Crooked Mountain Road, and pressurized from the lower PRV to the valve east of Pemmy Base Camp. So that fifty-one Crooked Mountain Road could get his building permit. So any of the lots past, um, Pemmy Base Camp to the next. PRV towards the Riverside Terrace condos. Um, would not have adequate water pressure. I think that's lot twenty-two, I believe. Is where that other PRV is located. I think, I think Carol provided you the map.
Yeah, there's a map that I provided, um, that has the little high lighting on there. The high, high pressure map that Ron created.
And that, and that map was created in consultation with, uh, Steve LaFrance. Uh, on the proper location of the PRVs, and what the high pressure zone.
Okay, so, so look at this from lot twenty-two, lot fifty-one is where the issue is.
Yeah, so, um, it'd be west of lot fifty-one, where that shut-off valve is to lot twenty-two. Unless that's changed, I haven't tested it since, um, I believe it was last summer.
Okay.
I think the outstanding issue was a PRV that needed to be either replaced or rebuilt, and put in. At the lot twenty-two, uh, site. Um, that's probably why he closed that valve, east of Pemmy Base Camp.
And did you say that valve had been repaired?
No, that's, I, last I knew, that was one that was, um. Severely deteriorated by rust or whatever happened, because it was never installed, it was just left in the, uh, in the vault, sitting on the bottom. Of the vault.
So the, the new six slot subdivision, is that within the high pressure zone or not within the high pressure zone?
Yeah, nine fifty, so the new subdivision is, the nine fifty line runs just above the top of the cul-de-sac. So the services will come in below nine fifty.
Yeah.
We designed that to make sure it would fit with the nine fifty.
The ten is to serve that off of the low pressure zone, and obviously, we've got to go through the engineering report and confirm that. You know, and work with Ray to make sure that that's confirmed, but that's, but it is below nine fifty.
And we also understand as a lot, we're gonna be working with Ray in the future to go through everything, to make sure everything's.
At nine, at nine fifty, what pressures do you have available for residential use?
I'm assuming that, I, I don't, I haven't analyzed, we haven't taken a hard look at that, but I'm assuming they, they established a minimum of thirty. I'm assuming that, I, I don't, I haven't analyzed, we haven't taken a hard look at that, but I'm assuming they place establishment minimum a thirty-five, thirty-one.
I believe, yeah, I believe it is thirty-five at the nine fifty mark.
Okay. Rico, would you like to say anything?
The, the only thing that I think I can add, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ron, but I think the nine fifty, wasn't that based on? Was that based on the study that Weston Sampson had done in terms of the hydraulic analysis? So.
Yeah, that.
Yeah, so that nine fifty, the, the, the criteria on the nine fifty is, is under a fire demand and maintaining a twenty PSI throughout the entire community. Throughout the entire service area. So that's the basis of the nine fifty, just for clarification.
Yeah.
So that's twenty PSI under a fire flow?
Yeah, so you want to, you want to maintain a minimum of twenty PSI under a fire, fire flow condition. And given the elevation of your storage tanks, you can, you can achieve that at elevation nine fifty.
So if, if, if they're coming off on this cul-de-sac. And the cul-de-sac's at nine fifty and the house is two stories tall. And they have a fire flow, that means they'll be a heck of a lot less than twenty PSI, won't they?
No, all, so design standard and Ray can confirm this, the design standard, the twenty PSI. Is to assure that you don't end up with a negative pressure essentially, or too low of a pressure in the water main to result from. And, and drive potential contamination issues. So it's the pump, the, as long as a truck can get that flow to the truck and doesn't create that pressure dropping below twenty PSI. It's not like we're trying to drive sprinklers up in the second floor from that fire flow, you're pumping with the truck up.
So is, is, is the minimum, I'm, I'm just asking a question too. Is the minimum twenty PSI under fire flow is that? Twenty PSI at the top level of the building?
The elevation of the main.
It's in the main. That's correct.
Not in the house.
So you could have, if you have a three-story house, you could have a. A negative pressure at the top?
No, the, the, no, you're only worried about the main and the ground. That's what that twenty PSI, in, in, in the water system design world. That's what you're worried about is the, is again, that negative pressure in the ground driving bacterial contamination in the ground in, back into the main again.
I understand that.
You, you're not so much worried about the house above grade because there's a backflow preventer on the house. So in the meter horn assembly, there's a backflow, backflow preventer. But you're also, you know, you're that, that. That fire flow again is provided by a truck, it's not in the building. So it's not like you're, you're, you're trying to rely on less than twenty PSI to fight the fire. That's not the issue.
No, no, I understand that. I understand that you have more, you have that available flow at the hydrant, just drops your residential rate pressure down.
Yeah, so basically you're, you know, when the fight, when there's a hydrant flowing.
Right.
You want to make sure that, you know, everybody else in town doesn't run out of water. You know, like you open the tap up, wait a minute, there's a fire somewhere and now I can't get water. That's, that's a problem.
Sorry. Public.
All right. All right, any members of the public like to speak?
Yes, I would.
Okay, hold on, one, I saw one hand first. What's your name, sir?
Yeah, hi, my name is.
Oh, hold on, sir.
Sure, sorry, my name is Douglas Smith and I'm from Westwood. So I basically have a letter here from the Board of Directors of the Westwood Homeowners Association. So if you want, I can hand it out.
Sure.
And also kind of talk to some of the points on this, but this is really in regard to traffic flow going through Westwood. Unapproved traffic flow as a result of the fact that the Cooper Memorial Bridge is now in a state where it cannot handle heavy construction loads anymore. So that's kind of the issue that's addressed in this letter, so market. There, and that, including yourself especially. So, so let me just kind of address the issue as it's being, as this is being handed out. So the really, the big issue here, I think Paul touched on it a couple of times, is that. Because the Cooper Memorial Bridge or the South Mountain Bridge can no longer handle the heavy loads that it was originally designed for. And, you know, and approved for regarding all these approvals, the EIS, the master plan. It's had dramatic impact on our neighborhood and all of the construction vehicles that are using Westwood as a shortcut. To get to South Peak is a very, very clear violation of both the EIS issued by the U.S. Forest Service. And the master plan issued by the town Lincoln. And the violation is really quite simple because when the EIS was submitted for approval in two thousand and six. It was based upon traffic studies that were done, which showed one hundred percent of the traffic flow. To get to South Peak from Lincoln, going over the Cooper Memorial Bridge, one hundred percent. So all of these construction vehicles, all the skiers and all that, were going to go over the Cooper Memorial Bridge. That was all part and parcel of the approval and the approval process. So if you look at those traffic management plans that were submitted, that's what it said. In fact, it was very clear and saying all of the vehicles going to South Peak are going over the Cooper Memorial Bridge. None of the vehicles, literally zero, was approved for going over Loon Brook Bridge, cutting through Westwood, going to South Peak. Now, we understand that reality has changed, unfortunately, and now the bridge is weak and can't take those heavy loads. But in all honesty, that's a problem that should have been resolved years ago when the bridge became weak. It should have been fixed to handle the heavy loads that it was designed to handle. So what has been going on realistically is over the past five or six years, all of the heavy construction vehicle traffic with no other choice. Because they all weigh way more than thirty thousand pounds. The typical dump, dump truck weighs sixty to seventy thousand pounds and a fire engine weighs about sixty thousand pounds as well. So all of these heavy vehicles, which were going and going over, you know, the South Mountain Bridge. Now we're forced to go through our neighborhood via the Loon Mountain Bridge. So this is absolutely unapproved traffic. This was never approved, this was never part of the approval process. So realistically, if traffic is cutting through Westwood. Then there needs to be an entirely new EIS issued by the Forest Service, as well as a master plan issued by the town Lincoln. Otherwise, all of this traffic is in violation of the original agreement from two thousand and six. The other alternative, which is much more practical, is simply to fix the bridge, which should have been done a long time ago. And I, I know, Mark, I appreciate the fact you addressed the issue and, you know, obviously you've maybe done some homework and understand. But as it is going on right now, every day, our neighborhood is being violated. And the terms of the EIS and the master plan are being violated daily. And as we stand on Loon Brook Road on a typical Monday to Friday, and we watch. One after another, after another of these heavy vehicles charging down our road, all of those are violations. And not, and they aren't only going twenty miles an hour, which is supposed to speed limit on the road, they're going forty and forty-five. This is something we never bargained for or agreed with. And by the way, all of these issues were dealt with way back when in the late nineteen nineties, when they were brought up to the U.S. Forest Service. And that's why all the traffic that were done were showing that all the traffics going over the South Mountain Bridge to get to South Peak. And I, I will make one other point on this, there was only one exception to that. And the only exception was Loon Mountain's own vehicles and homeowners' vehicles, i.e. South Mountain and Westwood. Aside from that, there were no exceptions. There were no exceptions for construction vehicles. In fact, that was one of the major impacts that was cited in the EIS about the concern of construction vehicles as well as public skier traffic. Okay, so right now, realistically, I, I appreciate you, you talked about this issue. This has now been going on for five to six years that, that's, that basically the developers of South Peak has changed several times, as you alluded to. Have been ignoring this issue. I also want to point out the fact that in the beginning, when Sentex was the original developer. They were very, very well aware of this issue. I've got letters, which I could share with the board, which Sentex sent out to all of the contractors and subcontractors doing the South Peak development. And this is, these are letters from two thousand and seven and two thousand and eight, that basically Sentex told all their subs and all the contracted. Do not cut through Westwood. The only approved means of access is over the Cooper Memorial Bridge. Of course, back then, the bridge held the weight, okay? And not only did they send, they had sent out letters like that, which I can give you guys a copy of, they posted it on the road as well. There were clearly posted signs on Loon Brook Road, which said, no construction access to South Peak. Once that bridge, okay, the Cooper Memorial Bridge couldn't handle the loads, those signs on Westwood disappeared. Those signs that said, no construction access to South Peak, they vanished. So this is what we've been dealing with in Westwood now for the past five or six years. And especially over the past couple of years, that real estate development is heated up. And all of this traffic is in violation. So you guys are using our neighborhood as a cut through to get to your development and violation of all of the past permits and approvals. And I know all of this stuff gets lost in the misty, you know, kind of amnesia of history, okay? But this is all reality, it's all there, it's all in the planning board minutes, it's all in the EIS. So this issue of fixing the bridge needs to happen immediately. So our position is simply this, two points. A, cutting through Westwood with construction vehicles must immediately cease and desist, pure and end of story. It is a violation, pure and simple. Point number two is that the Cooper Memorial Bridge should be fixed to solve this problem as quickly as possible. We don't want to prevent you guys from developing, we want you guys to develop. We all rise with the same tide. We want South Peak to be a tremendous success. We want Loon to add the trails and, and the, you know, and the lifts and all that stuff. We're skiers, but we don't want our neighbor to be the sacrificial lamb that's slaughtered upon your development. Because nobody wants to spend the money to fix the bloody bridge.
So could I comment? Yeah, you may.
So the other, I just, let me make one other point.
Go ahead.
Putting aside our development, Westwood Acres, okay? From a pure fire safety issue, and this is regarding South Peak. The average fire truck weighs fifty to sixty thousand pounds. They cannot go over the Cooper Memorial Bridge. So as Ron, Ron Beer alluded to, right now, the way they get to fight a fire in your neighborhood on your road is they got to go all the way around. They got to go over the Loon Bridge, cut through Westwood, go through the security gate, and then fight the fire. I don't know the exact timing on that, that, but that probably wastes about an additional ten minutes on a good day. And if it's a day when there's a lot of traffic trying to get to Loon, it can waste way more than ten minutes. And by that time, you could have lost a few houses to fires. So if I were you guys in South Peak, I would say, my gosh, this is a fire safety issue is wrong for you. Because you can't get over the, the Cooper Memorial Bridge. Okay, anyway, so that's why I'd be sorry to be so emotional, but this is six years of violations here. And I'm just right now trying to say, this is a big problem.
So I think that where I.
Mark, you need to address the board, not the press examiner.
So. What I can say is that we have, we understand all these issues. I can't speak to the previous owner, but clearly he wasn't listening to what was going on. So I heard about it at the last meeting, immediately we're diving into this. I think we'll reach directly out to the homeowners association, not wait for public meetings. I want to communicate that we want to be great neighbors. To your point, a rising tide of soft boats. I want to make sure that this project meets the expectations of the master plan originally. And to that point, heavy vehicles we're not supposed to be going over. Having a good fire truck, get to the house as fast as possible. It's just simple common sense that we clearly want to make sure life safety is number one priority when it comes to that. So I think that not only are we going to be addressing it with the board, but you can plan on hearing from us immediately about what are we doing? To address both your points, cutting through in a long-term plan.
Perfect, thank you very much. Let me ask you one other question, since we're now talking so close together. On the water tank issue, okay? You mentioned that you were good enough to put an easement to build a new water tank, which is a great idea. My only question is, the, the road to get to that easement, is that coming from South Peak property or coming from Westwood grounds? Because, okay, so it won't be cut, because right now, the only way to access the water treatment plant is through Westwood.
I think it's Westwood. I, well, it comes through our property, so I was making an assumption that if you gave me easement, it must be South Peak property. Yeah, it's through South Peak.
So the road, what should go on top, there'd be a whole new road?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They won't go up by the water plant, come in?
It's, all I can say is, to simplify it, is I know that the main road that's there, the easement is a hundred percent on our property.
The easement's on your property?
Right.
I just, I guess what I'm baffled by is if it was not my property, I don't think I can get the easement.
You know, it's property goes right up the Hudson on Westwood. So you, you, you're right on Westwood Drive, I'm sure you're well aware of that, or your surveyors are. So the fact that you're saying it's going to stay on your property doesn't make me feel any better. I live on Westwood Drive and the access is very possibly going to come up Westwood Drive and then on to your property.
What's your name, sir, for the record?
My name is Greg Reynolds, twenty-one Westwood Drive.
So we're, I'm, I'm happy to look into more.
Yeah.
I'm not, clearly I don't have that.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, what we provided to the town's engineer was, the town, town's engineer came to us, said. Can you give us this area, because we're not sure where the road's going yet, we need some room to move, to design it. So we gave them a corridor, Mark gave them an easement over a big area. So the town's engineer would have some comment about the specifics of that road.
Okay.
But even if, even if a tank is built up there, it's not going to have regular daily traffic. It would be like the tank that was built in Forest Ridge, I'll bet this probably. I don't know, the town group might go up there, the town one person may go up there once a day, once. So you've got one vehicle going up there ma- maybe once a day, so that's not going to tend to lead to. E- e- even if it does go up, way back out and go over towards the water treatment plant and go in. There's not going to be a huge amount of traffic, I wouldn't think, that would be going to that water tank.
Additionally, if I work over this, and tank gets higher up and it gets lower. It's lower.
Who's talking on Zoom? Make sure you're muted.
Put on mute there.
I can't tell who it is. Yeah, I can't.
I think they figured it out.
So I, I think, Mark, I think what Greg was, Greg's concern and Westwood's concern is again, it's all, all the construction vehicles. I don't know how long it's going to take to build this very large water treatment plant up there, water tank up there, I should say. But again, the point is, any, any roads to get to it should come through South Peak, not through Westwood. Because that again, is going to be struck, construction vehicles coming through the neighborhood, which is a problem that needs to be solved. So with that easement, you guys should build a road to get to the water tank. So you're doing it through South Peak property, not through Westwood property. So those, those construction impacts, and again.
I appreciate your comments, I think you guys as an association, and I hope we can get more involved as neighbors. You know, that our attitude at South Peak is much different than previous developers, that we're going to be available. We're opening an office downtown, we have full-time staff that live in Lincoln, that were here before I got here, but I realized I need good local people to help. This was super important. So there's going to be. Learn something to go there.
Ryan, you need to mute your, your Zoom.
So I, I guess, well, we can talk more at another date.
Count, did you have a question or just?
No, I want Ryan to mute his Zoom.
Brian is.
Brian's.
Brian.
I don't know.
It is not, it's not. Everyone, it's not me.
It's the only one that's not.
All right. So you mute him from, from the others?
So, so I got a question. I have a question for, for Doug and Mark. So. This traffic, if the traffic cross up, it's an issue. How early is the heavy construction traffic? In the interest of keeping South Mountain, South Peak going. Could there be something done where. Mark would say. We'll, we'll agree to, after you talk to the engineers, we'll agree to fixing this bridge within a certain amount of time. Would Westwood homeowners be agreeable to that, to be like a condition upon approval or something like that?
Yeah, and that, that's a really good point, Paul. I mean, I, I think that what we're asking for here now is for the planning board not to give approval for this until this issue can be resolved. And my opinion is.
That's not what I'm saying.
Okay, sorry.
That's not what I'm saying, I'm saying that we could give conditional approval, so long as Mark agreed to make the necessary repairs to the bridge within an allotted amount of time. Whether that's two years, a year, but at least it will commit Mark and his development firm to be able to. give him some time to fix the bridge. And, and at least you'll have a firm commitment, and it will be tied to the approval of, of these properties.
Yeah, I, I, I would say, yeah, absolutely, and I think if, if Mark and Westwood can engage over the next week or so, I think these issues can be resolved very quickly and easily, and a sort of agreement like what you're talking about could be fine. I mean, in all honesty, the fact that.
We're gonna reach it, I think that after we have an opportunity to get together, and we can spell out exactly what we're doing and what our game plan is, also understanding that bridge maintenance is part of Loon as well. But knowing that we're pushing this forward, that after we get together, before the next meeting, I think we're gonna be in a really good spot.
Okay. So all, all we're saying is, let's not make a decision today until this can be resolved.
Wait, Carol.
Carol, go ahead.
I was just gonna say that Loon's representatives are on here, do you want to ask any of them?
I don't think we need them for today, I think that let's just focus and keep moving forward, knowing we're gonna get together. Clearly we're not making, there's nothing finalized that's happening tonight.
Okay, so I saw someone that was zooming in, would like to ask a question. Would anyone else like to speak? Sir, what you need?
Chamber Tully, sixty-two Lumber Grove, I'd like to understand what the town's responsibility is in enforcing the agreements that Doug Smith mentioned relative to the traffic flow. Who is gonna control this?
See frustration, control it.
You don't know the road.
Well, it's a condition of their approval.
I think the easiest mechanism to control it is South Peak, to honor what was committed to early on and continue to work off that master plan. One thing that I think South Peak needs to be responsible for is governing what the intentions were. And as we keep moving this forward, this can't just be all on everybody else's shoulders, oh, it's not on us, it's on someone else. So some of the reasons why we're bringing the lists, and we're going through a great deal of effort to bring in the best consultants we can find to make sure things happen, whether it's our engineer firm helping the town to help with the water tank. We're gonna keep doing that, and as that happens, and as we have an office here right downtown Lincoln, and there's able to walk right in and ask a question to somebody who's helping me with the South Peak development, um, we wanna do that, so we're all working together. And then we'll be guiding that with, no, this is sent out to contractors, this has to be done this way, if there's letters, there's posts. That's gonna be on the South Peak, or to make sure we're aligned by, and doing our best to control that.
Every day, construction vehicles will go by my house, cement trucks rolling up and down the hill, dump trucks full of gravel, bulldozers being pulled, and other pieces of heavy equipment, every day, up and down, up and down, up and down. Is that gonna stop?
The answer is.
It's against the rules, it's against the regulations.
The answer is, is I'm going to have it stop as soon as possible. I wanna keep working with the consultants we've hired, and then I wanna be very clear to get in touch with the board and Westwood homeowners associations, which hopefully can spread that to the entire community. But I wanna make sure that we can have quick, open communication in a plan of action that has dates, where you're seeing the actions happen. One thing about South Peak and what we're doing and what our development company is about is not just talking, but acting. As we've done with the water tank and numerous other things, and we are knowing this is coming to light right now, and I'm glad Paul brought it up, the previous meetings already given me a jumpstart on it. So we're going, we're there, I would say by the end of next week, plan to hear from us with, hey, here's a schedule, here's what we're doing, and let's get a meeting with your association to make sure everybody understands what we're gonna do for the immediate and what we're gonna do longer.
Would anyone else like to speak?
I'd like to say something, Rob Colgan.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, um, yes, I witnessed, uh, what the last gentleman just said recently on a Monday morning, it was amazing to see how fast these trucks were going up and down the road all day long. One driver after another, trucks from every which way, it's only gonna get worse, you're talking about ten or eleven houses right now. I'd like to see this bridge repair expedited, I know we discussed that, but in the interim, come the winter months, that road gets pretty icy, slippery, even in these dry months, it's a dangerous road, these trucks are coming up there. The sign once read twenty miles per hour, as Doug said, the sign has been removed. I'd like to see the developer immediately work with the police department, pay for the details, to police that road, slow these trucks down. While you continue to do your due diligence to prepare for how we're going to build the bridge from the interim. It's a very dangerous curve hill that we're doing nothing about, just watching these trucks, there's kids walking up and down those streets all day long, especially on the week, uh, Fridays and Mondays. Some of this work goes on on Saturdays, I think. But during the week, during ski season, this is a ve- very dangerous situation. I've been there since nineteen ninety-four, I've seen so many trucks and cars pull up their road, slide off their road, crash into trees. It's only going to get worse, I think police details, signage, posted speed limits, and enforcing that until we get the Cooper Bridge fixed would be a good start to, uh, work together here.
So, thank you.
Want to address that?
I think that, I, I guess I'll reiterate that we're gonna act immediately. If there's a signs that were removed, that should be replaced with speed limits, I'm happy to make sure those get addressed. And as we're updating signs in South Peak to, to bring that over. But I think that as far as this is concerned, this is a newer problem that was brought up. So this is something that if I had, I didn't have as much notice as we did, for example, our engineers are here, and if we had exact details about a plan and the cut, we had more items. If we can, if the board will allow, you know, the understanding that they are gonna hear from us by next week with a plan. We're gonna have time to sit, look at pictures, go through things, talk about concerns. We can have a meeting that we can host in person with everybody from the Westwood homeowners association to come. Me with myself and our team, ask questions, understand what's happening. And then we can address what is the absolute best method to making this work. And then that way, by the time we come back to the board, I hope to come back to the board with a clear resolution that we're all on the same page, and that everything's getting addressed, it should be addressed.
Okay, Paul.
That sounds like a, a great idea, and, and I'll tell you why, because you're coming in tonight for, um, site plan review for these lots. You're gonna come back again for site plan review for other parts of your development. So if, if your words lock your bone, when you come back in for the next site plan review, I'm sure these same homeowners are gonna be sitting there saying, this is what you told us last time. So I mean, I, I, I think that they gotta cut you some slack somewhere a little bit, but you have, you're gonna have to produce to itself.
Just like we're doing with the water tank, we're gonna do with this, and we're gonna continue to do, and this is a great community, we wanted to be a part of it, meet your neighbors.
I think the site plan review process allows for that, so.
Could I, could I say one more thing?
Yes, sir.
Yes, uh, I, I just found out about this meeting, I believe, late Sunday night, so I'm a little unprepared. Uh, I'm surprised that we, as Westwood residents, weren't notified about the water tower. And we weren't notified about this meeting. Luckily, we, we, we rallied and got together and scrambled to deal with the situation, but I would like to think we will be involved in everything moving forward as it pertains to, uh, u- using our neighborhood.
Paul.
Yeah, just, just so you know, the, the, I believe the agenda and is sent to Doug as the association president. And it's up to Doug, um, to be able to relate that to all of the Westwood homeowners. The town does that for, for other associations, right?
Right.
So that's how, so that's how that works.
I think Michael Sapers wants to say something.
Okay.
Yes, thank you, may, may I speak for a minute? I just wanna make sure, I understand, going forward, nothing is gonna be approved on this development until the developer has had a chance to meet with the Westwood homeowners. And that we will be notified of any future meetings so that we might participate in them, is that correct?
Yeah, I made a decision on approval tonight.
There's been no approvals tonight, right?
Not, not yet, we're gonna take a vote shortly.
Can we, can we forego that until all of these issues become resolved?
I mean, we'll discuss, we'll discuss that, uh, once public comment is done.
Okay.
Paul.
Can I, Mark, again, how, how soon did you wanna plan on getting these things, getting these lots going? I know you wanna get them done quickly, so you can start, you know, cutting and excavating, doing stuff, but is there time? Do you think in this process to allow you to meet with the Westwood homeowner? I'm asking you, is there time to allow you to meet with the Westwood homeowner before we approve this?
Public comment, and we can, we can ask the applicant more questions.
All right.
So.
Well, I'll answer his question now, after this.
So I can say that we're open available tomorrow, we'll know any day next week, we can put a meeting together in person or in Zoom. We can host a meeting and arrange for space for everyone to meet at. So we will make ourselves available, this is not something that we're gonna now be, we're not down in Texas and I'm taking off, so. So unfortunately, my house is in captivity. So as this goes forward, um, we wanna be very available. So I think this is something at the end of this meeting, if Doug, if you wanna set a time together, we can put something on the calendar right away, if you wanna talk to everyone in the association, and determine what the plan is from there, and you can get a meeting for next week. And from there, continue to stay in contact. As we move forward, we wanna make sure that what we're proposing and what's going very quickly is out there and into the public. We're not looking for things to be done last minute. That's why the initial lots that we talked about were several months ago, we waited to come back and do it all after we had more time to digest the project.
Okay. Sir.
This process needs to include Loon, because Loon owns the road. You're gonna put signs up on Loon's road, I think you're gonna be bringing them into.
And that's where we need, we can go through it, and then I can arrange to have you and Loon work together. Okay, that's part of that, you know, everyone, we're gonna get.
Would anyone else like to speak? Okay, sir, motion to close public comment. Do you have a second, hold a favor?
I'm trying to get word into that.
Sorry, I have to speak up.
This is information. Everybody in here, whether you're Westwood, Beachwood, anywhere else, it's imperative we get this water tower in as fast. Because with the Norkin burnt, and Callum Ann burnt, we were within half an hour with all water for the town. And one time, this whole town burned down from, by Loon Mount all the way down Main Street, twice over the last hundred years. If we don't have the water to care, we're gonna be screwed. That's imperative we get these tanks taken, put in, take care of. Doesn't matter how, if we don't have the water, why for, all the developers not gonna meet squad.
Two quick things, um, when did the South Mountain Bridge become deficient? I always thought it was good for anything.
I am in the process of trying to determine all that, I.
Yeah, the Hoarder on Tanner probably put that to that anyway.
Right, and that's why we immediately are working to get them, so I think that for the next meeting, and even when I meet with the association, I'm hoping to have good news.
Yeah, it's just, all of a sudden that came up that the bridge is deficient, I don't.
It's, it's before my time, so I'm gonna, that's where we're diving, we're not, we're, we're diving anyway.
Second question, Andrew, could you show us where the nine fifty is? I've been looking at different pages, I think it goes from the top of this cul-de-sac across the yellow birch circle. The lion's share of everything you wanna deal with is below the nine fifty.
Nine fifty, uh, is, like John says, just above this circle, so.
Then it goes kinda straight across the yellow birch circle.
So, so this, this proposed, all this, the upper limits of it is right at.
What page is that?
S two.
This is on, yes. A point, a point in nine fifty, right.
It got inspired yellow birch, and then it kinda disappeared.
Nine seventy.
Everything I see is well nine fifty that you want played.
Seventy.
CS four, that's all below nine fifty. It's five, that tells a good story. It's just, this crooked mountain road gets knocked out, that's.
Then it goes through. But they won't meet the minimum water requirements.
Well, no, the tying point, well, right.
Yeah, I mean, nine fifty is right here.
Tying point, so nine fifty runs right across the top of this cul-de-sac, right here. But the tying point's to the water.
Why don't we go through the applications? Yeah, have all your butters been notified?
Um, yes, they have, and as you described, the slantings of the people that are on. I printed out a, a butters list, which is, in this case, sixty-one pages with approximately ten people on each page. And, um, the statute directs me to, if there are homeowners associations or condominium associations involved, I'm supposed to forward it to, uh, an officer, usually I do an officer and a property manager, cause oftentimes the property manager does all the work. And, um, and the officer is responsible for notifying their members. Now, I know that's a problem, there are some officers who don't take that responsibility seriously. Um, but I can tell you that, um, that I have these plans digitally. So if, um, like, for instance, Doug asked me, Doug Smith, who's the homeowners association president for Westwood, um, and I sent him a copy of those plans digital. And so he was able to share those plans with anybody who wants it, right Doug? Um, so you can email Doug and he can send you the plans. He also has the plans, the conceptual plans for the expansion of the trails into that portion of South Peak, so. And I also have them too, so you could email me. And my email address is planning, P O A N N I N G at Lincoln and H dot org.
Let's someone just run through the list. On page two, if anyone has any questions, we can respond with.
Something is more first.
Yeah, that's page two, it starts off, uh, names and addresses of the butters. Required and provided, yes and yes. Application and notice fees and a check payable to town of Lincoln, yes and yes. Preliminary layout or final plan, that's required for a particular application, yes and yes. And a stick down submission requirements. Site survey map, four copies of map that scale not small than one inch to one hundred feet, which should have the following information, name of subdivision, name and address of owner, sub divider, required and provided. Surveying engineer, required and provided, eight foot arrow and scale. Right in, name and addresses of butters. Important natural features for macro resource inventory. What land is defined by H I S map, hydroic soil, wetlands, overland zone, et cetera, provided and required and provided. Building and setback lines to include setbacks for wetlands required and provided. Land to be dedicated for public use, applicable, percentage of site in fields and woods. Percentage of site in fields and woods required and provided. Property lines, existing buildings, historic sites and structures required and provided. Existence streets with names or root designations required and provided. Size of site in acres, with numbers of acres in village residential district and in general use district, required and provided. Topographic contours and watercourses, both seasonal and year-round, required and provided. Well slash municipal water sources within one hundred and fifty yards of site required and provided. Soil is required and provided. Time consulting, engineering reimbursement fee required and provided. Tax map change, changes fee required and provided. Site location map drawn at a larger scale and shown on site survey or both subdivision map with tax, tax map page and parcel numbers required. Right in zoning classification, minimum lot sizes and frontage required and provided. Size of site acres required and provided. Existence streets with names and root designations required and provided. Additional subdivision information either shown on plan or provided separately. Buildings remain non-applicable. Deed restrictions per the HOA. Preliminary drainage plan required and provided. Easements required and provided. Future subdivision proposals on same site not applicable. Lot lines required and provided. Soils and groundwater attests pits not applicable. Proposed open space not applicable. Fertilization test locations of data not applicable. Rules and comments, federal state vocal. Preliminary Ross, preliminary road cross-sections and preliminary road profile required and provided. Setback line required and provided. Both streets slash roads with location names and redaway which required and provided. Water means and other utilities preliminary required and provided. E I S and/or environmental assessments required, not applicable. Overlays with special investigative studies to be required, not applicable. Paper copies at one mile on those balls, twenty-four inches by thirty-six inches required and provided. All information described in preliminary layout, except that the drainage road plans and profiles, water and other utilities shall be filed, required and provided. Name and addresses of all individual owners and corporations of lands involved, required and provided. Names and addresses of all butters required and provided. Existing building streets, rights, threats of waste streams and easements required and provided. Natural features in the vicinity of the affected land required and provided. Name, address and seal of surveyor or engineer required and provided. A small location map indicating parcels in relation to major streets and intersections, the tax sheet and parcel numbers in the zone and district required and provided. Bearings and distances of entire property and lot lines based on an on-the-ground survey plus topography in five-foot intervals required and provided. Lot areas and dimensions at square feet or acres required and provided. Lots numbered in accordance with town tax map policy required and provided. Statement of responsibility and liability for street slash roads and their maintenance required and provided. Estimate, estimate of cost of required improvements and statement concerning bond or other security required and provided. W S P C C subdivision approval not applicable. State driveway permit if any, if applicable. Not applicable, excuse me. Legal documents for homeowners association or other arrangements for property and utility management. Says X H O A. This is X.
That's, this just falls under the.
I'm sorry?
That just means it falls under the current homeowners.
Okay. Subdivision regulation compliance statement required and provided. Space for broad endorsement, for board endorsement required and provided. Information specifically required by board, including E I S overlays, et cetera, and as far. Right, does anyone have any?
I have a question. Joe, you'll know this. So that old, rock concrete structure that's along that, along that road. I thought that was used to be the old closed pen mill. Is that a historic site?
Over there, no. The posted mill was up by the one again.
Okay.
That was part of the copper dam that had for the mill to supply water going to Loon Mountain, going to the mill pond. That part of the dyke was built on the old copper dam when you did that, but they didn't. And Terry put this, made, put this in.
So it's not an historical thing?
No, okay. It was, a lot of camp up there about eighty-five years ago, that doggone runway. Okay, one.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the application for subdivision is complete.
Except the application is complete.
Yes.
Alright, sir, a second?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
The opposition passes. Alright, now let's go through the application for site plan review. Check with page one. Just run through it. If anyone has a question, just stop. Scale not less than one inch equals forty. Forty inches provided. Submit three copies of blue or black line prints, provided. Submit a digital copy of the print, provided. Date, title, North Arrow on scale, provided. Name and address of the owner and applicant, provided. Name and address of the licensed land surveyor, provided. An accurate plan of the site showing existing natural features and toe, including watercourses and waterbodies. Various types of vegetation, topographical features, any other features which should be considered in the site design process, provided. Type, extent and location of existing and proposed landscaping and other open areas indicating what existing landscape and open space areas will be retained. Applicable. Existing and proposed topography of the site at two-foot contour intervals provided. Soil mapping units and unit boundaries provided. Floodplain identification areas provided. Location of all buildings within fifty feet of the site and the location of all intersecting roads or driveways and utilities, water, sewer, electric cable and telephone within two hundred feet provided. Location of all building setbacks required by the land use plan ordinance provided. Location of district boundaries, including wetlands, provided. Lot area, street frontage and the requirements for minimum lot sizes provided. Location of off-street parking and loading spaces or the layout of the parking indicated not applicable. Location with curbing and type of accessways and egress ways provided. Location of all existing and proposed deed restrictions, covenants, et cetera, referred to the HOA. Survey, survey property lines showing the deflection angles, distances, radiuses, length of acts, control angles along property lines and monument locations and names of all butters, that's provided. If the realm is a subdivision, then lines and names of all proposed streets, lanes and ways of easement intended to be dedicated for public use, all subdivision regulations shall apply, that's provided. Plan views of all buildings, either existing or proposed with their use size, location and floor elevations included, applicable. A typical elevation view of all existing and proposed buildings indicating their height and signing not applicable. The type and location of solid waste disposal facilities not applicable. Location, size and design of proposed signs and other advertising or instructional devices not applicable. Stormwater drainage plan showing the existing and proposed methods of draining stormwater runoff, provided. Direction of flow of the runoff through the use of arrows, provided. Location, elevation and size of all catch patients, dry wells, drainage, ditches, swales, tension basins and storm sewers, provided. Engineering calculations used to determine drain requirements, provided. The size and proposed location of water has supply and storage facilities, supervision for future expansion of storage and water facilities not applicable. Size and location of existing and proposed public and private utility connections, including provisions for fire protection, provided. Location type of all existing and proposed lighting for all outdoor facilities not applicable. Copies of all applications submitted for applicable state approvals and permits not applicable. Performance guarantee of bond, uh, nothing checked there. Illustration of effect on pedestrian and automotive circulation not applicable. Illustration of fencing walls and boxes not applicable. If waivers for non-compliant, if waivers for non-compliant C O T construction specifications for roads, parking, streets, drainage and bridges will be required, not applicable. Does anyone have any questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, um. More of a real good question is, would there be a need to require any performance guarantees or bonds on this proposal as is presented? We've made other developers do certain things. I'm not sure that this rises to that. Uh, I, I have to ask the question.
And that was my reason for not checking it off because it wasn't requested.
Yeah, I mean, we, we have done.
I guess a question is, is there anything that they would leave unfinished for the tax base would have to step in and finish it?
Well, I, 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 I'm not sure if it's right. And I don't know if it's just, I don't know if it's just a taxpayers.
I'm not disagreeing with him, just asking the.
Right.
Question.
Right. And I don't know if it's just the taxpayers or would you, I mean, is it, is it, a homeowner is there, would, you know?
The, or the taxpayers.
Right, they're taxpayers. So I mean, if something didn't get done here, it's not that Mark would ever not finish it.
Right.
You know, but we have done things for other developers, so I'm just gonna ask a question.
Yes, one last recall if you can weigh in. Ray, you still there?
I am.
Paul's asked a question if the bond should be required for this project, if it rises to that level.
Performance guarantee or a bond?
Yeah.
Well, it's, um, I'm just thinking off the top of my head here. It's done on, it's, it's a, it, it, all the utilities are private, the, the road's private, um. Off the top of my head, I can't think of why you would need something like that. I mean, I, I, my understanding is all the stormwater management facilities are already in place. This is just adding lots to the subdivision.
I mean, I guess.
Off the top of my head, I, I don't, I don't think it rises to that. I mean, we, we, Ray, we, we did it over in Forest Ridge, um, when they were constructing that, um, or for the roads and stuff like that, to make sure that if the developer didn't fulfill his obligation, that the homeowners or any people that had bought lots there were not left. Um, trying to figure out how they were gonna finish it, so. Uh, you know what I mean? I mean.
And did you do that for the interest? I know you did that for the ponds and there was.
Yeah, we did it for the. For the infrastructure when we were during, during the initial part of, of Forest Ridge.
During the initial part, when?
When it, when they started out going up through, because it was, it was one of those things that the town held the bond for, to make sure that, um, that infrastructure would, would go in or they would, you know, this, they would finish their commitment to either a road or something like that, so.
Are you tired? Go ahead.
We're, we're still holding the bond in Forest Ridge for the redoing of the homeowners association road, not a town road, that the developers were driving over to, um, through the pines project up at the F.
Oh.
Okay. In this situation, what he's doing is building a new spur.
Right.
Off of a road. I mean, to be honest, if he digs that up and walks away from six lots, um, he's gonna have a hole in the ground, but, but the homeowner is, he's not, he's not digging up, you know, Crooked Mountain or Hemlock or any existing roads.
No, no, but I guess my question would be probably more towards the six lot subdivision, is that if those lots are pre-sold, for example, and something happens.
You need attorney general approval, so I can't sell those until those are done.
Until it's all done.
Correct, so because of the way the attorney general works, we, everybody's gonna have continual access, not a problem. If I got started on that and didn't do it, I wouldn't be able to sell those. So if you get them under reservation, but you can't sell them until they have adequate access.
Okay.
Meaning it's finished.
You can't sell them till the road is, the cul-de-sac is done.
Well, yeah, it, it, but to all, all your approvals in hand and you're basically, you're, you're buildable lots, the lots are saleable. But I, I, you know, I'll, I'll make the comment that, you know, I work in a lot of different places and do a lot of different projects. Most commonly, you know, obviously you guys have the purview to require what you want, but most cases, the bonding requirement relates to messing, the, the project in, having the potential to impact public infrastructure. So if you're outing a town road doing a water and sewer tie-in, or you're impacting town, town-owned drainage or something like that, that's where the bonding typically comes in, where there's gonna be a direct town expense to address it. Now, the Forest Ridge example, I'm not sure what the history there, if it's, if it's separate owners or whatnot, it may be set of special circumstances, but Mark kind of controls everything and like was pointed out, this is a little bit isolated, so if it doesn't get finished, it doesn't get finished. Mark doesn't get his revenue, but it doesn't impact anybody in the neighborhood.
Right.
I think, I think Forest Ridge, you'd think this particular developer is using somebody else's road to, to build it out, that's.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, and that's why we did it before, I believe, in Forest Ridge, was to protect the, um, homeowners that were in there and so.
They're gonna protect the town after the fiasco in Mountain Lake. Cause they went in, they were bankrupt and it, the homeowners, through the town of that, and it's good for it. They, they, for one, for them and people in town, they have one, so put it. And they had to put it in for the developers that backed out, the town did. That's why this law get put in.
I'm okay with not doing it. I just had to ask a question because we have done it before, so I. In the interest of, if we're gonna have another developer come in, we can't treat one differently than the other, so we gotta kind of, good to know. You know, we gotta kind of.
Alright.
Stick with what we've typically done, and that's why I asked.
Okay. Does anyone feel that we should require a bond?
No. You.
Any other questions on the?
Well, I'll make motion to approve the application. Site plan review is complete. Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we have two, uh, we have to approve this subdivision and the site plan.
Well.
They have a few things they have to discuss with, with the homeowners association.
Should we, should we, what's our next meeting?
Two weeks.
Well, two weeks. Make a break whether we'll make a decision tonight?
Well, I think two weeks would give us good time to meet.
That's what I'm looking at. So if we can, if we can continue this meeting to our next meeting or? There, there's, it's been no notification of the butters?
Hold on. Carol?
Okay, um, if you wanted to continue this meeting to the next meeting, that would mean that I just wanted to let you on the Zoom to know that you will not be getting a separate notice about that meeting. Uh, because they're gonna make a decision, if they make a decision to continue this meeting to the next meeting, it's to a date and time certain. So it would be six o'clock on Wednesday, October.
Twelve.
Twelve. So that's the date that you would be continuing meeting to. Uh, but I would not be sending out additional butter notices on that because we're present at this meeting and anybody else is present at this meeting, they'll know we'll need to. So.
Doug, I guess you'll notify, um, the Westwood.
We have a Wednesday, that's six P M.
Wednesday, close twelve.
Yeah, so.
Do we have any?
Make motion that we continue this hearing until October twelfth at six P M.
Seven, alright. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Don't worry yourself.
My mother, my mother told me that that used to be part of the, the closed factory.
I don't know. Let's take a two-minute recess.
And also back at the, uh, another big truck they had running down the north.
Yeah, we might want to tell people.
Is this meeting over or is there still additional agenda items?
Yeah, right, two-minute recess.
What are the additional agenda items being covered tonight?
Uh, let's see. Conceptual for employee housing.
Lifts the door.
Yeah, he lives in Westwood. Where else? Over Sherma, oh, excuse me, Peacewood.
Peachwood, okay.
Okay, just down, it's a road, one-way road comes out, it's forward Sherma, do you still live?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm in Randy Amart there, there.
Alright, let's reconvene. Ray, I think we're all, all set for the moment.
You guys are all set with me?
Yes.
Okay, sounds good. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ray.
Ray. Next, conceptual site plan new, conceptual possible site plan review. C O N twenty twenty-two, bad, dash eighteen, map one oh eight, block sixteen, Michael Donahue, Brian Klaus. Workforce housing, quad approved. Brian Klaus presenter, Dr. Roger in B B A F C L L C, South D L L C.
I think that that doesn't need to be, yeah.
Okay, I didn't think so, but. Alright.
Okay, I was wondering that.
So you're looking at possible workforce housing, forty-four units of low, low rent workforce housing, including one bedroom, two bedroom. Three bedroom and four bedroom units. Building one would be a two-story building with twenty-four one-bedroom, one bathroom apartments. Building two would be a three-story building with four two-bedroom, one bathroom apartments and a four-car garage. Buildings three and four would be three-story buildings each with two apartments, then a two-bedroom, one bathroom apartment. One unit that would be three-bedroom, two bathroom apartments and a four-car garage. Building five would be a community house. Three-story building with three bedrooms, four bathrooms and a four-car garage. Looking for input and advice and whether support for the project is possible. Go ahead.
Uh, so I changed a little bit, community helps, we kind of did some, some work on it, decided.
I think it's only conceptual.
Yeah. Decided a little bit more, actual low. Low price point housing. Our goal is basically to create housing that starts at seven fifty a month. For people who want to live and work in this town long term. A lot of need for it with all the businesses around. I don't think there's a single business that's full staff right now. The state of New Hampshire, to be honest. Uh, but a lot of the issues here is we're a very service industry. Location, and therefore. Wages are incredibly high, so the majority of people are having to commute into town to be able to do the retail, do the restaurants. That commute's getting difficult, and with. The opportunities opening up closer to home for a lot of these people, they're often gonna do that. Which makes it very difficult to hold on to and create strong workforce that, I don't know, business wants.
Thank you.
Uh, basically, just trying to see if. Something like this project would be possible in a location similar to this, or have some places. Else you could point me towards. To try to. Get employee housing operational. I found this location, it's. Tough way back in the corner, it doesn't seem like it would disrupt anything. Uh, we're really working hard to create positive curb appeal for it, so it's not disrupting to any. Neighbors or whatnot, this is right down the street from our cozy cabins is, so I believe that is commercial. So I'm not trying to put it in the middle of high-end residential area or anything, trying to affect property prices. Just trying to keep a nice. Place for people to be able to feel like they can live long term. Uh, and hopefully grow and better themselves, better their families, and have a better. Better standard of living. I know that plenty of the food service employees that I work with, I'm chef myself. I got a background in electrical engineering, but I opted to be in the kitchen because I love it so much. I uh. I know that they're working sixty, sixty-five hours and just. Make it right now, and that's, that's not a good standard of living. Retail, some of those people are working seventy-plus hours. Two different jobs, pay their rent, try to have a family, try to have a kid, whatever it is. And if I can positively affect. Ability for people to. Grow in this town, I think it all in all will benefit the town. But I'm not quite as. I don't have the team behind me of the last group that presented, so. That doesn't have all the numbers, but yeah, I'm more, more trying to feel it out and see if something like this is possible in this town.
Paul, would it be? Um, just for Lincoln and Woodstock residents, or be when you make something like this, is it? Is it for anybody that works in general Plymouth Littleton areas?
Actually, we can't.
No.
Well, if it's private. So.
Is is this private?
It would be a private, and the reason that we wanted to make it private. Um, is what we really wanna do is we wanna send, set our rental rates, but then be able to do discounts. To the service employees for. Uh, kind of what they're making, like if if they're working at Loon making fifteen bucks an hour and they come. And we have a one-bedroom price of a thousand bucks, and we can give them two hundred and fifty dollars off a month and get it down to seven fifty. We wanna work with the companies that are gonna, that have already said that they are willing to help get employee housing up. So. Technically, yes, it would be open to everybody. But the people living in the Lincolnwood Stock area are the ones that are gonna benefit from it, because they're gonna be ones that are getting the discounts. If somebody wants to come up here from Plymouth. They're gonna learn about the system, and they're probably gonna work, wanna work at Loon. Or at the Common Man, or at the hotel, or whoever, so that they can then get the discounted rental rate. There wouldn't be a reason for somebody, or we're trying not to make a reason for somebody to live up here. That's not working up here, because they would be paying that, that full price rental rate, they could go anywhere and pick it up, they don't have to. These are pushing for primarily Lincolnwood Stock residents.
Okay, so, you know, so I think the, you know, the community would welcome, you know, would you have a provision for a restricted multifamily? Now, ordinance, but for right now, this possible isn't sold for that.
Yes, and I know that. Uh, but I wanted to talk to you guys first and see if there were, if it was a possibility before I. Went through all the hoops to go to the zoning board to see if it could be. Um, zone for that, or.
So I mean. You know, you can either, you know, apply for variance, you know, we can't speak for the Z B A as to whether or not you'd get it.
Yes, I understand that.
You know, or we could rezone, you know, the property at town meeting.
Could be possibly, we. We can try to get a result, we can't, we say.
We, yeah, we, we put it before the town meetings, there's no guarantee.
No guarantee about anything.
Yeah.
I've learned that in my life. If, they would have to, it it would also have to come for a site plan review, right?
Yeah.
Big time.
Just so you're aware of that.
Yes.
That would have to come for site plan review, which means that a butter is never, you would be notified. Um, OJ, how does that work with water and sewer and all that within town? It's four, it's forty units you're looking at?
Forty-four units.
So, would you be looking at doing everything all at once?
Yes. Probably have to have a water capacity study and a soil capacity study. Just because the size of the project.
Yeah. Try.
Traffic.
Is is that wrote up, there's a. D O T responsibility coming down Bogbrook Road. They wrote, so you might need D O T. Um, weighing in on it as well.
Another issue. Cause uh, Bogbrook Road is about the size of Maple Street. For another six, seven hundred guys coming up and down a day, that's gonna create a severe impact on that road.
It's only forty units, so.
But everybody has a car. Most people I found out in one place, they go fifteen to twenty times a day in and out. Plus by that times forty, what do you get?
I I think a traffic study might be better to, to base a judgment on.
Yeah, they, yeah, the D L C will come up with.
Yeah, I mean, they'll, they'll probably wanna look at the intersection of Bogbrook and Route Three.
Route Three.
And they'll use prevailing statistics to to judge how many cars would come in and out of that. I think that that changing the zoning in this would be, one parcel would be considered spot zoning. I I think. The way to do it is to change within the rural residential zone, the allowed uses. To allow multifamily housing, and whether we wanna do that across the board, or by special exception, we could do, we could do, not this. We could recommend that we do it either way. Town, town needs to vote on this, no matter what we do with zoning.
That's.
Um, but I think the way to go would be to recommend a change in allowed uses in rural residential to allow. Multifamily, um, res, this, what is it called, multifamily?
Restricted.
Those are the word, restricted multifamily development. Um, you know, we need it in town, and and the amount of. Spaces that are available to do this are are very, very few. And those that exist, uh, you know, any, any parcel larger than, say, three or four acres. Um, much of that is already in the rural residential zone. So basically, we're allowing this, this to take place in the zones where there's really not much.
Right.
Places to allow it. I I would say expanding that would be in the best interest of the town.
When?
It's still gonna need to go through site plan, so we still get to look at.
Well.
You know, traffic and lighting and noise and parking and all the other stuff that we would typically look at. It's just that we'd be able to to do that, uh, and, you know, in broader area of the town.
What, when were you thinking of starting this project?
Uh, so, I'm trying to get the basis down, see if the project is viable, and if it is. Then we've already kind of started talking to people about fundraising aspects of it. But we can't kind of go full, full force until we know that we have something. So I'll tell people on something that we don't have a concept on.
Right, and go where OJ was coming from, thinking that this is September going on October. You, you still probably have six months before you even. Truly know whether you're gonna have the financing or be able to do it. So, in in that regard, going to March meeting and making that change, proposing that change would probably be the best option.
No, I don't wanna dissuade him though, from, from, if you wanna do it more quickly, you could go before the Z B A.
But then I consider that's spot zoning if it's. So I've, I've been.
Free to go before the C B A, it's not.
I've been, I've been told to not go after spot zoning by, by two different mentors that I've been working with.
Yeah, which, which is why I recommended the.
Yes.
Change allowed uses in all rural residential zone, Carol.
I mean, you could also instead, if you wanted to, if you thought it would be more palatable. Instead of saying yes on the chart for accepted uses under rural residential, you can also. Have an accepted use by special exception, kind of like you do with, you know, an apartment that's. A detached, you know, detached building that's greater than a thousand square feet or.
Yeah.
You know, so that have some oversight.
And he did, he did say that.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we also make a new zone. That section of town, make a new, new zone and allow it there, if you don't wanna do it townwide.
If it's that small, that should be spot zoning.
Yeah, you have.
It's not.
Twenty-five acres.
You're not gonna hold that whole area of town, not just that one parcel, you can't just.
Right, but I think if we go by what, what OJ was saying, and and making it a. An allowed use with a special, combine or do with a special exception. I think that. Freezes a lot of thing, and and from what I've read about the rules of the state and what they're trying to encourage. I think that that would put us up. With it, within the parameters that we could meet their guidelines by doing that, because we could do that. Um, and still allow that this type of housing. So, and it could be ready for March pretty easy, I would think.
Yeah, really sneaky way of doing it.
We don't be sneaky.
No, he puts in, that's five acres, right? So four point three three, so, I mean, yeah.
Four point three three acres.
Okay, but except you have five acres, you give a fifty units, that fifteen units, put any law power on each one, that would give them thirty units.
Yeah, but enough, you have to subdivide it if you like, so that'd be.
No, unless it forms an association. Another one, concept link is never looked at, too.
So can we, can we just pull a board and see if it worked, if people are.
See what the, alright, we'll see what the preference is. Well, I'll get, can I ask?
If, if, if he went to the Z B A right now, the Z B A, again, if he proved hardship. If 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 he went to the ZBA right now, the ZBA again, if he proved hardship and there's five things, right?
Yeah.
I don't I don't know that it would mean the.
I don't think it means, I I think it might be tough.
Okay, okay.
I think it would be.
I just want to make sure that so that's really not an option for you.
It's a long shot.
There's another thing you might want to take out. The road going from the Route three. Up to the unit is substantial. Very narrow. I don't know how wide the town owns right there. Is it twenty or four or thirty two feet? Things more like twenty four. Well, that's the FTR spec where she puts buildings in. That that road is not the TRS spec. Whatever you want to call it now. He'd be called TRA. We have to look into that. You might get some child just fixing the road up, widening it. Come if you go to the planning board. Eventually it gets the road here to fix it, accommodate that much traffic.
So.
It's something to think about. I'm gonna try to. This way you're not.
So Governor Sununu has to invest New Hampshire fund right now. That has a bunch of money for that type of thing, but I don't know how long it's going to go for.
Is that window still open, Cal? Do you know?
Oh, I I know that the deadline because.
So the deadline for the first part of it, but the second part of it was for city. Operating.
Which might be.
Yeah.
But we have also.
We just look at that to try to fix any issues going up to it.
It has a different.
I'm just trying to give you what could happen. You could be asked for it along the line.
Yes.
You don't want to be surprised. You get everything all of a sudden. Now this comes up. If you abduction or you don't have to worry about getting surprised and oh, my God, and.
Your application deadlines are. January twenty seventh, twenty twenty three for that portion of it, I think.
Yeah, so that's the only concern that I would have.
Still has twenty twenty three time. Sometime in twenty twenty three.
I don't think the town could apply for any funds to do anything like that if it's not zoned for.
But I think right, but I I think the town. Is that a town road? So. If the town thinks this is a real viable project and should be done, the town could. Use capital improvements money to improve that road on the capital improvement schedule.
They haven't improved my road in thirty years.
So you're not going to work anymore. We need we need some more. We we need some. All I'm saying is it's possible that the town could buy onto this as well.
But the tax base.
And 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 put put that in. Put that in.
Historically, the developers have paid. Paid for the improvements they need.
Bogbrook Road needs needs. Look, doesn't.
I don't want to say it was just done, but just prior to my coming on.
It was not.
There's the four roads project. Bogbrook, Parker, Good Boo, Maltese. We've done one bond and that bond was just paid off.
So you're thinking so you you think the road meets the standards and already?
The road itself is a solid road. Okay, because they did the subsurface.
They went right out deep.
They were down deep and redid the road. Is the width wide enough?
Pretty tight, like twenty four feet.
Yeah, I mean, I live on a road that's. Seems to me like it's thinner than that road.
I mean, regular lanes, twelve feet, so.
The road you live on was actually an old gravel dirt road profile.
It seems like a pretty good off. It seems like it's pretty good off. You know, I mean, the town needs it. Forty forty units is a lot of units and.
Question. Like when head came in twenty years, they could turn itself anybody they want, but we think scenario. What? When he had came for the town meeting. About three, two, three years ago, they said. I was talking to the gentleman who was the head said in twenty years after. After it's all paid off, we can turn ourselves we want and put on some condominiums or whatever they want. This be the same scenario or would it be restricted on it?
So technically the grants that. Uh, we'd be applying for. Uh, mandated for either ten or thirty years. Technically, after that, it could be whatever it wanted to be, but.
This under our ordinance, this type of use can't be condo.
Yeah, I would like it to be. Long term. I'm not doing this because I'm in the real estate business.
No.
I'm going to still be in the kitchen. I'm trying to get good workforce housing here and however it needs to run to get people into this. Town to work.
Would it be an on site manager controlling the route either? Because we had a problem in Littleton. I went out from Littleton going to Whitefield. There's a big development. There's tremendous amount of. Ulegism going on. But now it's been changed over to get some management site keeping it quiet. It's pretty, it's pretty nice.
I would imagine forty units that you're gonna have to have somebody in charge.
I would assume that you would with a loud voice and big fist.
I would assume that would make the most sense.
So what do you think?
I mean, I think we should.
You could start following the board about whether or not we could do that. See if the the board was.
Yeah. All right, Paul, what do you think?
I I think we should. I think we should try and change that. So it's an allowed use with special exception.
Okay, Steve.
Try it, knead out.
Okay. And to be in a loud use with or without a special exception.
Yeah, Joe.
I say with a special exception.
Okay, I mean, I prefer creating a new zone up there and allowing it in that zone. Would be my thought.
They tried that in Route three when Mark Rednick was here. He was told it was going to be a spot zone.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we're we're rezoning the whole section, not just this one.
You're zoning all Liberty Road. He was told by the state he couldn't do it because that was spot zoning. Liberty Road is more than five acres.
We're not talking just five acres. We're talking about this whole area. It's not town. It happens to be rural residential.
Keep in mind also that. That the big piece of property that's to the left. Of the subject lot is the Franconi State Park. So. It's not gonna.
Actually.
Loosen that up.
Technically, it's not even a park. It's just sure plus land the state owns. It's ever put it to the park. It was bought nineteen seventy one or two and ninety three came in from. First president arranged corporation of George Kater. And he bought the way they say bought the whole truck of whole chunk of land for ninety three. And it cost a couple million dollars. George paid twenty dollars for it. We bought it. So that was a good profit. I could go on the whole. I could tell you the whole scenario. It was never incorporated into the state park. It's not a map of state park. But they were approved by the legislature, but they are. It's still approved in town book, same book is.
I don't think anybody is going to be buying that up in the.
So so it sounds like it's the board's willing to work with them to make a change, so it could be allowed.
But it can't be any more quickly than than March.
Right there. And I would say. If you're going to do it. You probably want to do some of your preliminary work before you. You know, at the same time that you're trying to get your funding, which is talking to the town about water and sewer use, talking to the state about access on to. Route three there. So some of those things you could be doing while you're you're researching.
So it's the water capacity study and.
But you also you also could talk to. Neighbors and people in town who vote and talk to them about. The idea that the county board is considering changing the. The allowed uses in rural residential. Loosen up for that because. Need to have buy in from voters.
And especially a butter. I don't know, Carol, could you give him a copy of what the butters might be to that so that he could? Know know what their names or he might go door to door or whatever he had to do just to see if.
Keep your head like up on this.
Something sensitive, but it's right off the top of my head.
Maybe you want to take Joe with you.
There's nothing you can realize. There's a right away to that property. Along to the Forest Service.
Yes.
So this year where you don't build a house right in the right way.
Yes. I don't know if you guys got that.
Yeah, we got it. Any other questions for us?
Don't think I do right now. I'm sure I will in the future.
Thanks. All right, Brent.
Put your shoes on. It would have died now. Yeah, I know. And so a lot of these photos are just reference photos as we talked. So fifth page in. A. Easterly view of our marquee sign. This sign has just using it the way it's always been used. We had one that hung underneath which the two small ones fireside and Cohen would hang. Underneath the sign where he used to have. Fired on the mountain, the pottery place. Um, the next page over. Is rarely the point of discussion is I have the, this is the east wall. Face would be. It's the east side of the building. But it would be viewable from western traffic or from the parking lot. What I'm trying to do is use this wall. For. Those signs. So it shows some of the signs that are up.
Yeah.
And I would finish the second row and the third row. So I'm trying to just be able to use that for wall signage.
So you have fifteen signs total.
Yeah, and these are for like local builder wants to market himself. Get plus a sign up there. Um, those are called, it's like a cooperative sign where. Anyone in town can call up and reserve to use that conference room. Because they have any meeting, you know, someone here is having a meeting, but doesn't want to have it on site. They can call and schedule a conference room. For free.
Do you want changeable coffee sign?
One of.
It'll be permanent, be changeable to you to.
Correct.
Well, the permanent signs.
The permanent signs are fine. I'm not changing. Those are going to be for whoever comes in to the spaces, which they're all full.
Right, but I mean, these signs on the side of the building, the permanent side, you know, I mean, they're made of wood plywood with letters on it.
Right, so it's not changeable coffee.
Are you looking for only fifteen? Because if I look up and down, it looks like you've got five, but you have room for another.
Well.
Three or four down below, so.
Not gonna do that. No, it's just it's above eyesight level, so.
So you would keep it to the fifteen?
On that wall, yeah, and then to the left of the window. I want to.
Front corner you're talking about?
Yeah, I want to feel I want to get less on the marquee. So when people are driving by and more other stuff, just when they're helping their vehicle.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, so that they know where to go.
All right, Carol's waving around to you.
Well, I I just want to say that. It's, he has a kind of business that is not. Kind that we anticipated when we drafted and designed the site, the sign. So what he's doing is he's basically has just created a design center where all these different. Peoples participate in it. So he, these are basically off. But if they are participants in his design, they can also, just by the way, this is Lincoln sign. Never gets perfect. So anyway, a lot of these. Um, and we're trying to, you know, we're trying to get everything straight. Okay, so. So he and he's evolved his business over time. So now he's like a design center. So he's got all these businesses using his space. He's inviting them in. Some of them, you know, they use the copier and they use the conference room. You know, we use a lot of things, you know, it's a lot. So we aren't really not there, but they're not. Like moved in lock, stock and barrel either.
Very low impact.
Right.
Even though it's offered to a lot of people for free usage. If East Branch is having a meeting with a client and it's foreign and they can't meet on the site. They can come down to the office. They can use the conference room. We supply, you know, three different types of coffee, all sorts of drinks, all sorts of snacks, bathrooms, all that type of stuff. We have different TV setups, so people have to do presentations. It can be used for multitude of reasons, but inside we'll have. Foreign full floor store moving in, open in November first. Then we'll have a property management company in the county downstairs. We have a construction company. We'll have more. Construction companies that market themselves this way, just to get more in front of the public. And then we have a cafe, which is the second thing on here. So. I mean, I did an overlay. If you guys got the, we redid the paving and we remarked everything. And we're the only one on the street that really doesn't have parking problem. You know, and. OJ knows even like the Alpine adventures and stuff, it's hard. The guy next to us that owns the old sport home. He's got a parking issue. You know, we don't, we often share our parking with the neighbors just out of necessity. And. Our real estate office, we don't even require the agents to come to the office. So if we have one or two cars there ourselves, that's usually a high number because everything's set up virtual. So no matter where people go, they can get all the documents and set up coming to the office. I mean. Foreign company is one person in and out. You know, the closing company, maybe they're there three times a month. You know, real estate people don't even come into the office anymore. They either just text you or call you, so you leave it properly. And as far as closings goes, we flickers of the pandemic, nobody really goes closing anymore. You know, it's they're either doing the mail away or just the buyer and seller.
So are we back up to the signs?
Yep.
So do they need to, they obviously have more wall signage or what would be allowed?
Yeah, and. Our sign ordinance is set up, so it depends on. How many square feet or what percentage of the building that particular business occupies. And, you know, it's just not designed for his business, you know, or your sign order. So I wasn't sure what to do with it, so.
So I mean, you know, we have the depot that has multiple businesses and they have, you know, the one street sign with.
Right, but they.
The hot part about that is a lot of people, a lot of people slam on the brakes. Because they can't read the sign. They don't know.
Right, but it's more, they're more traditional. Their physical presence is in. You know, if they have a sign out there, they would.
Okay, but we can't regulate what the sign says.
Right. So. So I'm just not sure how how to.
I was just gonna say that we can't regulate what the sign says. So so there's no such thing in this town or in this country anymore. It's on premise or off premise sign. Because you'd have to read it to determine whether it's on premise or off.
There is, there is, because you can limit the amount of off premise signs. Doesn't mean you have to know what the sign is. You can limit the amount and the size of it.
Of signs.
Of now premise sign.
Well, how do you know if it's off premise? You have you have to read it.
Going going back to this, if he's taken up X square feet of space for signage.
Right.
And you can put up anything you want there for a sign.
Doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter. We we're not allowed to regulate that anymore.
Let's see, it's based on a business having so many square feet or what percentage of his building.
What's also, what's the percentage of the building that businesses in total can have on a on a on a wall sign?
What's the percentage of the building that businesses in total can have on a, on a, on a wall sign? Yeah, I don't remember it either.
So he's also, he's also allowed extra for on-street for road frontage. If I remember right. This.
I think that's, you know, if you have it on Route 3, you're talking about a freestanding sign?
I, I, I think. I'm not sure whether it's freestanding or not, but I do know that there's something in, in the original sign, or it's about having. Street frontage, and he, he would have two streets there to be able to base that on. That allows you the ability to have a little more signage. I think because this is a. I mean, it's somewhat of a, of a special request, it doesn't meet what we currently have. That it would be a good opportunity for it to go to. ZBA.
Well, I think, I think, I think the ordinance just, planning board can give a special exception or waiver.
For signage?
Yes.
I don't have a. Is that true, Carol? Can the planning board give a special exception or waiver for signs?
She's bringing it over.
Yeah.
Quite enough for everybody, but.
That's right.
Fast readers.
Okay, I believe it. One problem, the way that building was designed, really, first put out, truly is. Not all building. You get to go stairs down, no matter what you do, after building is not even here to get a sample.
We're trying, we're working in that direction.
No, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, you're not, but saying, I mean, which building is the building? What Deeks put in. They didn't, they didn't plan on, all the other requirements gonna, they had to go with it. Now we get limited, now you have to live with what you have, try to work around it.
Yeah, that's so. So the lay road frontage rule applies to freestanding signs. The maximum number of signs used for advertising a business is limited for, for any one business at any one location. So there's. Multiple businesses there.
It is on page sixty-one.
Thank you.
Sixty.
Six one. You put body again, yeah.
Oh, it's page seventy-four?
Right, yeah, standards for wall signs.
Yeah.
If one business or a multi-business property uses a wall sign as a primary sign. Or like this is the end, there is no freestanding sign. So you have that. A business or multi-business property uses a wall sign as a secondary sign with a freestanding sign as the primary sign. So that's what you, you have a freestanding, okay. The maximum size of the wall sign will be limited to 10% of the wall area of the business or businesses. As defined herein, and shall not exceed an aggregate of 25 square feet. Per 500 square feet of wall space with a maximum size of 150 square feet.
Place is 100 feet long.
So, so assuming you're, you're, you're able to do the maximum, it would be 150 square feet.
Okay, well, wait a minute, if you look on page seventy-seven, integrated sign plans.
That might be what he needs to do.
Says, this section applies to any multi-business property, singular business occupant of building 10,000 square feet or more. Of gross floor area or tourist attraction located within the general use or village center zones. Where the owner voluntarily seeks relief or flexibility from the required standards of this article.
For him to do that, he has to have, he has to do a plan, right?
Yeah.
Well, how many square feet do you have?
Oh, in the building? Forty-five hundred on the first two floors, so nine thousand. In the third floor is about another thirty-five hundred, but that's not finished yet.
Says we can increase the aggregates footage by 50%.
He can get a special exception for signs too from his ZBA. It's on page seventy-eight. So John will pass that building down?
What's that?
John still won't have that building?
No, oh, no. So when John had it, I asked him to turn it into a duplex. So I jumped through all the hoops to turn it into a duplex condominium, and I bought my half. Cog Hill Construction bought the other half. But as I was filling in my side up with tenants, I'm like, you know, he was supposed to be getting more people for the design center. To work collectively, and I just ended up buying it back from him like a month or two ago.
Because. My concern for. At the wall, it's all Chicago. So, my concern for doing it underneath.
No, I don't have.
The current regulations that we, we open a doorway for a lot of other. Opportunities to like this. If we do it underneath a special exception, then people have to come in and plead their case a little more that way.
I mean, I think he's looking for more than 50%.
Right.
More signage.
Yeah. If we do it underneath, if we, if he does it underneath a special exception, then it's, it's done by the, the.
But the front wall, I'm only using underneath the windows.
If you got, got more, the next. I think the simplest way is by, by special exception. From the ZBA, you can get, you can show them what you want to do. I don't know, the hardship, the hardship would be.
Well, special exception, not here up to. Great.
Yeah, no.
That's a very.
It's a variance.
Special exception just says we want to review it, not allow it, blanket, but we want to review it based by case.
Okay, we said hardship, that's why.
No, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
There is, it's.
Too late at night, I have to.
There's no sign variance, it's, it's just special exception.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Yeah. I think that would.
It does say ZBA. For some reason, I thought it was the planning board.
Well, I would think that would be the way to go.
Well, if you choose us through the integrated sign plan.
Oh, yeah, he's good.
You have 150 square feet allowed. But by right, and then with, with the integrated sign plan, we can allow. Uh, an increase of 50%, which would be another 75, so 225.
Okay, and these signs are probably. Like eighteen by eighteen?
Like that, each, each sign is what, 18 inches tall?
Yeah.
But what is that?
Eight, eight feet long.
Oh, eight, okay.
So 27 square feet.
What zone is that in?
Village, we see.
Village Center.
Yes, we qualify for that.
How much is it?
Twenty-seven feet per sign.
No.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay, right. And what's.
And you wanted, you were saying 15, right, on one side, another one side?
Yeah, you could probably do about half that.
Half that.
Two, two twenty-five, you know, you're gonna, you know, it's like eight, gonna be eight and a half.
400 square feet.
That's why I said, that's why I said special exception, because.
It was a square footage for a sign deck, it should be about, it's 12 square feet per sign. Foot and a half by eight feet, so.
Nine five times.
So it's 12 square feet per sign.
Right, 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 okay.
And I, you said that I could do up to 170, uh, 225? 150 plus 75 is 225.
225.
But I think is that a total of the whole building or?
That, that would be, that would be the max if he's, if the building is.
Well.
10,000 square feet floor area and.
So, so 15 signs is at 180 square feet.
Right.
And then you're gonna have some along the front.
Already have them.
They gotta, they gotta be included in the aggregate, I think.
They would. Well, it says you're looking. Be there, says businesses with multiple exterior walls separated by at least 90 degrees will be allowed to use up to two additional walls of the building for a wall. For a wall sign, provided the area of additional wall signs does not exceed 75 square feet each.
Yeah, and those are the same thing. Those are, you know, 12 square feet. The stuff on the front and the stuff on the marquee is, shouldn't even be in play.
It does.
So.
No, we just talked about the wall signs.
It's all inclusive. I believe it's an aggregate, I believe it's. You're right, I tell it was all inclusive, like you said. It's an aggregate.
So 150 on the first wall, and then you have a wall that you get 75?
That's what I believe.
That's what it seems to me.
Yep.
That's under the, under the wall sign.
I'll be.
I, right. That's not under the integrated.
Integrated sign plan. We're gonna use that for a basis, so we're gonna get 50% more.
Right, which for one, you have to do.
Well, every situation is different. Technically, you don't set precedents.
But that's, but that's why you do, that's why you do.
Special exception.
Right. Because you don't set a precedent that way.
It says, yeah, we can do an integrated sign plan.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I think you can, I think you're close.
Yeah, I mean. Under wall sign, you can do 150 square feet of wall sign. Just, just as, as the ordinance is written. Under the integrated sign plan, which, that means the, the, the whole design of the, all of the signs on the whole property, including the stand, freestanding. And the wall signs.
You're looking at 270.
You're looking at 2, 225.
50% more of 180 is 90, right?
We're talking about our limit, though.
He said he could do 180, and under the aggregate.
No, that's what he wants is 180.
I thought you said, no, OJ just said that underneath the, the current regulation, it's, it's, it's 150?
150.
Plus the 50%.
Which would be 75.
Is 225.
225. And he's at 180.
I'm sorry, how big do you say these signs were again?
18 inches by eight feet.
So 1.1.5.
1.5.
Times eight.
Yeah, 12 feet per sign.
12.
We had it, they were longer the first.
12 times 15 is one.
Yeah.
But. That's only, that's, that one wall, it's an aggregate, you gotta take all of the other ones too.
Right.
And that's just for the wall sign. On the integrated sign plan, he still had, can take.
That's what I was trying to say.
Still can take the, the freestanding sign and increase it or not.
In the freestanding sign, we're not changing at all.
Okay.
We're just staying with what we have, and out front on the three signs underneath the window. If you're talking 12, 12, you're talking 72 square feet.
So first of all, we can have a little of 250.
So if there's. Out of 225, 75, if it's on the front of the building, and you'd have, you'd be allowed 150 on the, on the side.
Well, it'd be. It's the 150 plus the 75, which is 225.
Right.
So out of the 225, you gotta take 72 for the front.
Yep.
Which drops you back down to.
150.
Right, so it's a difference of. Seventeen. Yeah, so it's a difference of 17 square feet. 27 square feet.
Wait a minute, it's 150 on the sidewall, and then you can have up to 75 feet on the front wall.
225.
Right. Then if he goes, we integrate.
Two sides, right, you're gonna want.
Oh, I've got three, I've got three sides, yeah.
Yeah. But you're not looking to put anything on the other side of the building at this time.
No, it's on, you know, it's on the westerly wall.
But east, east wall, I don't think you have much visibility anyways, even if you wanted to.
Well, this is the east wall. So from the.
West wall.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you had in west.
I don't wanna cover up the utilities, not a lot of that.
What's that again?
I said I finally cut that tree down and we'll cover up the utilities on the side, okay?
Well, for an integrated sign plan, you, you have to meet all ABC and B.
So, OJ, we're right saying the marquee's out of it. We're leaving the marquee just the way it is.
Yeah, marquee would be your primary sign.
Well, I don't see it that way.
Look at the wall sign.
The requirement flexibility, it says more signage, that's 50% more aggregate, so it's an aggregate of all of the signs. That's what it says.
A 50% more of all my signs as well. Yeah, that's just gonna drive the square footage to the outside.
But you have to include this, right, you have to include the square footage of your existing signs. And this, and the 50%.
I mean, if you add it up altogether, that gives it more.
It gotta give me.
Right.
Right.
And I don't need that much. All I wanted to avoid is putting them up, having it cause a problem in a discussion, and rather just say, this is what we're doing.
What do you think, Carol?
Well, we think we should write our sign board.
We're working on it.
The number of signs you wanna put up.
I just wanted to continue what it looks like there across.
Under the normal wall sign regulations. At whatever was, 12 feet per square.
Yeah, 12 square feet.
Per sign, you could put six on the side of, of the building and six across the front of the building.
Yeah.
With the integrated sign plan. I didn't calculate, because it says the, the cumulative, so that would include the front side.
Right.
50% more, I just did 50% more of the wall signs would give you six across the front and 12 on the side. If you add in the, 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 I don't know what your square footage is of the front side.
Marking.
But you could certainly do. Three more on the side. Two more on the side.
It'd be close, yeah.
So you might not get 15, but you'd probably get 13 or.
So just do that and play it safe and don't ruffle.
I would do this integrated sign plan, because, does that need to come before the planning board?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It does, yeah.
And I think that those, the planning board will have a better understanding of signage than.
True.
Well, it's hard because there's. Stationary, there's one, two, three, four. Eight tenants, right? And then these other are like cooperative tenants.
There you go.
They all sign leases. These are all leases. So it's not just somebody posting a sign. This is somebody that's actively coming in.
So they have an equity interest in this property.
Yeah.
You should go for a little less because you can amend this thing by either going to the planning board. Board of selection and designate, the town manager, the plant board chairperson. Or as luck misdesignate.
They just want to make sure there's some.
Page seventy-seven, number six.
What is it?
Well, Carol already said I could do.
Page seventy-seven, number six.
Thank you.
Approved plan amendments.
We're on it. Approved plan amendments. So once, once he gets what he needs, he can come in.
All.
As long as it's in the spirit of what.
Keep in mind that this, this, there's also a limit on the number of signs, but I would call. I would call the side of the building with whatever is gonna be 12 signs. In that space as a single sign with. Different sections or whatever.
Yeah, we used to have a huge billboard on. Before search develop.
The only problem that you have. Even under an integrated sign plan. Whether it's, whether they're gonna be considered off-premise signs.
No, they aren't gonna be off-premise, because.
Well, it says. They all.
Leases in a renting space.
Their renting space.
Hundred percent, hundred percent.
So everybody that has a sign will have a.
Sign lease, sign lease.
Okay, then you find it.
It's fine anyway. With or without a lease.
Okay.
Well, it says, it says that the script of an off-premise sign is a sign that serves as an advertisement for a business that is not located on the property of the business that is being advertised. But he took care of that by saying he's, he's got it all covered with the lease. Yeah.
Friends.
Yeah.
Well, it's just, you know, so many of the smaller contractors don't have back office, they don't have a place to go in this. In this is open to paint all of them.
Okay, so, so can you just give me a final here, like?
Final aggregate?
Final, you're talking about twelve signs on.
Fifty, fifteen sites.
Fifteen sites, where's the?
I told us fifteen signs on the east wall. And how many do we say on the front?
When you say on the front?
Six.
Six.
Total of six on the front.
And he's gonna apply for an integrated sign plan.
But in order to do that, he has to have an integrated sign.
Right, which means they have to come before the plant for.
Yeah.
Well, let's go on it right now, because I don't wanna do this again.
So the freestanding sign in the village center zone is supposed to be less than fifty feet.
The freestanding.
Right, so, so we have a fifty-foot sign limit and we have a hundred and fifty, what wall sign is two hundred. Now we can allow fifty percent more than that is three hundred square feet.
Of freestanding sign.
Of, no, no. Of, of total signage. So if the one out front is. Fifty, which it should be, because that's, that's the limit, then that leaves two hundred and fifty square feet. Of wall signage that the, could be allowed under the integrated sign plan.
How much?
Two fifty.
Two, so three hundred total minus the fifty for the freestanding is two fifty.
Okay, now, it has a pre-existing freestanding, I don't even know how to think that is, or it's a pre-existing. I'll figure that into a dream.
That's pre-existing, I think we leave that alone.
Pre-existing.
Does the integrated sign plan need to deal with pre-existing? I don't think so, doesn't say anything like that.
No, it does. I mean, that's, that's the purpose of it, you integrate everything together, so, so I'm guessing your front sign is more than fifty square feet.
I don't know.
I don't know either.
Well, freestanding sign, one of fifty square feet, we put in.
I would say if those things, if those signs up there are eight, then you're looking at ten by, ten by eight, eighty square feet. But that's not all, the wall wall is not considered sign.
Carol, can you see how you measure freestanding sign?
What are we looking for?
Freestanding sign, how to measure it.
Originally, that was freestanding sign was put in for the new changes.
Holy shit. And that takes into consideration a support structure and nurse. Freestanding sign must not exceed fifty square feet for a single business.
Right, for a single business.
Excluding external structure, one hundred square feet.
Oh. For multi, for multi-business properties.
Thirty-two square feet.
Are not to exceed a hundred and fifty square feet, including the structure. See, I, I didn't read far enough beyond the fifty square feet.
Well, it's, it's thirty-two local business properties that permitted one freestanding sign with only thirty-two square feet allowed per business.
For a business, not to exceed a hundred and fifty square feet total.
Including structure.
Including the structure, so you, you.
Yeah, that, that's weird, because it goes on to say the support structure for freestanding sign, that's what could be different. Is that higher than twenty feet, right?
Is that higher than twenty feet?
Yeah. No. I would say he meets, he meets the freestanding sign, so we leave that alone.
Well, through the integrated sign plan, everything comes into, into play.
He's allowed a hundred and fifty square feet for your freestanding and a hundred and squi- fifty square feet for your wall signs.
Plus seven five on the front, huh, plus seventy-five feet on the front.
No, the hundred and fifty square feet of wall signs is a total.
Oh, it says. Businesses with multiple exterior walls separated by at least ninety degrees will be allowed to use up to two additional walls of the building for a wall sign, provided the area of the additional wall signs does not exceed seventy-five square feet.
How many square feet in your whole building?
Um, I think about twelve-five.
Me, ten, we can look at the tax guy anyway.
Right. It says the utmost of the sign permit application is detailed, section E two of this. For both existing and proposed.
So, so Jim, under that, then the wall sign being on two different walls, one of them can be a hundred and fifty square feet, which would allow you. What, fourteen signs? On the, on the wall and then, and then on the second wall, not to exceed seventy-five, which would allow you.
Thirteen, thirteen. You're right, fourteen signs is a hundred and sixty-eight square feet.
Okay, so thirteen.
Yeah, probably twelve, actually, it'd be a hundred, so twelve.
So with no integrated sign plan, you'd be twelve on the side, six on the front.
Yeah.
Closed.
Closed.
Does that sound right, Carol?
That's good to hear.
I, I haven't spent this much time reading the sign ordinance and all the details.
Right, but I mean, if you read, if you read that's B, businesses with multiple exterior walls separated by at least ninety degrees will be allowed to use up to two additional walls.
Page you on, Jim.
Eight seventy-four, the very bottom paragraph. Businesses with multiple exterior walls separated by at least ninety degrees will be allowed to use up to two additional walls of the building for a wall, for a wall sign, sign, provided the area of the additional wall signs does not exceed, exceed seventy-five square feet each.
So paragraph A gives him a hundred and fifty, paragraph B gives him an additional seventy-five, but has to be on a different wall.
So in this case, though, he wants the hundred and fifty on the sidewall. But I mean, just.
Right.
I mean, it doesn't say which wall he has to, has to have for the hundred and fifty.
This thing gets confusing, because if you look at C, it's a. One business or multiple, multi-business property, but I think he meets it, so I, I agree with OJ's, you guys is.
So, so no integrated sign plan?
No integrated sign plan.
Grandfather, the freestanding sign.
Yep.
Come in and apply for a wall sign of a hundred and fifty square feet on one wall, seventy-five square feet on the other wall.
Does that meet what you need?
Sounds good.
You got that, Carol, just write it down?
I wrote that, yeah.
All right.
Your building looks phenomenal.
Hey, have you guys seen the front plan?
Yeah, we should go inside too.
Yeah, I mean, the inside, like, we've already spent over four hundred thousand in the building. So. Beautiful, beautiful offices. I mean, my son's got a glass ball house in his office, you guys really should. Do that, I was gonna suggest, and I don't know if the town ever does it, but might as well tell you guys all right now. It, it may be beneficial, um, once in a while to have a town coffee that we can sponsor. And for some of the local people, just come in and meet different people on the planning board. And just try, it's really just supposed to be a big melting pot. If the town's got a problem with, uh, a family, local family that needs help, confidentially, they can come to us. We have a bunch of different groups that are working in there, a lot of them are investment groups as well. And if there's a problem, we can take care of it that way and just, no one has to know anything about it. Um, a lot of my clients that do stuff up here have done things like that, uh, for local families.
I think you should let Jane Leslie at the welfare office.
Yeah, and I, and I told Carol about it. Because we, we really wanna just, the door's open, so that means everybody that's going to get coffee, you know, stuff like that. We do it as a courtesy in our office, but obviously we're gonna have a cafe, so.
So this cafe. So we're all set with the slide, right?
Does anyone have any other questions about the signs?
Everyone likes the hardscape up front.
Yes.
We're gonna do that in spring.
Okay.
So it's gonna finally, it'll look pretty good.
Yeah, yeah, it's going to have the pervious.
Pervious, all, all pervious surface.
Cool.
So we're actually increasing the pervious surface rather than.
Yeah, that's a very.
Yeah, it's fine, it's all acceptable.
Conceptual, right, this, you know, brought to my attention, I might feel like it squeezed in here at three o'clock yesterday, so. Bobby Graves, Kathy Montielto, primarily from Hampshire, um, looking to see if we can, uh, get a satellite location in Grant's building. So, um, quite basic, no food, you know, cafe, it's more of a coffee shop specifically. Um, zero twenty-four seats on the license that we applied for through Department of Health and Services. So our max, our, our cap at the twenty-four metric, which I think obvious, also fits within the calculations for parking spots.
I was gonna ask, what's the calculation, yeah, how many, how many parking spots?
One for every four seats.
Right, one for every four.
So we, in theory.
Seven, so we would need seven, how many other businesses are in this, so you have to calculate them all.
Well, the thing is, no one's separate there, like for, for.
Why don't we still gotta calculate?
Well, there's twenty, there's, I think we counted twenty-eight onsite spots and there's eight, uh, on off-street or on-street.
On-street, there's a count. No, I only get twenty-four. Oh, they can't count.
Twenty-five if you park on one.
Twenty-four, twenty-five.
Twenty-five of the head cap. Okay, just, just say twenty-five for shit's. Twenty-five. And you need six for here.
Six for the, for the cafe, yeah.
Six for the cafe. What else is in that building, Brent, your, your office?
My office, um, a photo studio, one guy in a photo studio downstairs.
Does it go by square feet of a business?
The retail square.
One, one for every hundred square feet.
So we need to know what each, each business is and how many square feet.
So, and then we've got, it's not really a traditional business room.
The only retail component.
Brent, how many square feet is the building, each floor?
Um, forty-five hundred, it's, um, sixty by ninety.
Forty-five hundred square feet.
And how, how many square feet of that is gonna be the, the coffee shop?
Oh, fourteen hundred. With storage, full, full capacity.
So the seventy-six hundred square feet-ish of.
Let's get that.
Retail. And Cal, it's one space.
You'd be qualified as office.
I mean.
That was eight hundred.
Okay, it's one space for every three hundred square feet of public area, so that doesn't include storage, so, storage doesn't count. And then in addition. There's the J, okay, we're on page twenty-two, twenty-three, parking on street, so. The first one is. Just a business and other uses, the one space for every three hundred square feet of public area. And then the second one that applies is, um. Okay, J, on page twenty-three, in addition to the above requirements, the town should require one additional parking space for employee parking for every ten parking spaces required.
Yes, so, so what was the commercial requirement, I mean, the requirement, how many per square feet?
One space for every three hundred square feet of public. So I don't, I think Brent has some storage areas in his facility.
So if you just basically say, seven-six-hundred. By three hundred. Twenty-five parking spaces. Because you take the nine thousand, forty-five hundred on both floors, subtract the coffee shop.
Well, you know what, Brent, you have, you have.
Which is seventy-six hundred.
Weird centerpiece, that's not.
Bladed by the three hundred.
Yeah.
Per.
Yeah.
Just twenty-five parking spaces.
Wait, that's not. He gave me that part of the square foot.
That's twenty-five plus six, just thirty-one. Parkout behind there.
That's what's included in the twenty-four.
Yeah. You, you get a copy of the.
Yeah, there's a.
Yeah, that's what I was looking.
So Brent, wasn't there a restaurant in there previously, what was there before?
Candy ice cream, I believe.
Is that, when did they go in, you know?
I think they were in earlier, either earlier than lunriss or after lunriss.
Okay.
But it almost predates me.
Seems to me I remember something coming in for that building.
Well, I know that they had all sinks and stuff in the bathroom.
Yeah.
Because all the plumbing was there and they had all the commercial stuff there.
Which requirements for an ice cream shop's a lot more.
Of coffee. Right.
Let me buy a, a, a launch shot.
I, I mean, it looks great, the building, but. Ninety percent of the time, no one's there, because it's per, per DM type of use.
I know, but if you sell a lot of those, someone else takes it. We get the. You just gotta find a way to make it.
I'm sorry, what page is the parking one?
He has a huge foyer, he has a huge foyer that's not really. It's not really.
So you need to, what you need to do is find, take each office or each, each space and tell us what the square footage is. Because from there you can, and then take out the closets, take out the foyer.
The town already has a copy of everything, because it's already gone through, only switches condominium, only has.
Yeah.
Do the calculation, which isn't.
You can just go in there and take, maybe just tell us what those, how many rooms, how many places to get in there, I mean, it should be simple though. Just, just take your office, the other wall office.
We can print it out, because it's already been an ass, but they started it down.
So get us that, get Carol that, move.
Twenty-two and twenty-three.
She can figure out this, the, how many parking spaces. We go from there, just gotta get back in for the.
The foyer, because it really is like.
Just can't put a chair in foyer.
It looks nice, but it's a passive way to get to.
Right.
The offices that are off, you know, in the center spot.
A bathroom.
Yeah, so.
A closet.
The only retail, the only retail.
I shouldn't have bought the space head.
Long-term clip for parking.
Less repaid.
Locally. Yeah, well, I mean, for what we have, we have more parking than anybody else.
Just.
What's that?
The gypsy cafe.
Well, the thing is, is that for him only having that number of seats and we've already. It's not like we have another restaurant entity, that type of thing going in there, everything is office professional, so.
But right, that requires certain.
Yeah, an office, most of that is a public space.
Right.
It's still an office, still a commercial space. But you're gonna take out all the other, that's what I said, he has to give you the, what he's using, I mean.
Right, yeah, instead of gross square footage, what's the net?
The net square foot, usable square foot minus store and bathroom and hallway.
Foyer, hallway, stairway.
Take that out.
Doorways, bathrooms, the back.
That's gonna help you a lot.
The back utility rooms, all of that should be subtracted and what's, you know, what's the amount of space that I as a customer can go in for retail purposes?
Three hundred and fifty square feet.
More than that, how many offices do you got, break your office.
I mean, well, no, but the other stuff is office space, not like a retail, where you're going in to buy something.
Yeah, because it's not retail.
It's all the same.
Yeah.
So.
So what you do is go, yeah, I mean, this. You know, you said you have the tax card, it'll have the layout of the building, right?
No, we have an ass, we have all this, it's already. No, we haven't Asbill, we have all this already, which is a triple, that's for this particular problem, right?
It's just. So, yeah, it's a quick calculation for, on our end by an hour.
But I'm thinking that if you look at what's actually usable public spaces.
Sure. Well.
That, you know.
I know.
Not that hard to figure out, I mean, you go in there, twenty minutes, figure it out.
Yeah, well, get, get their building design and figure it out, and, you know, subtract the bathrooms.
We just submitted an Asbill, turned it into condominium, so we already have full-size plans here. And then I can resend the same thing.
Just need to take a tape measure, go in, and say, this room's this big, this room's this big, subtract all your.
No, what I'm saying, it's already been done, it's already, but we're having a.
What I'm saying, the time you find it, send it, it'd be quicker to go in, it's ten minutes, you just go it out.
I need a measurement sign, though.
Right, I guess, my question, what do we need to do to move forward?
He needs to get us the square footage?
No, no, yes, this is, this is, I mean, conceptual, right, so does it, does it need to come aside for review?
Yes.
To change the use.
Okay.
It's not a change of use.
It's not a change of use.
I don't think it's a change of use.
How is this?
I don't think the coffee shop is based on what you just said, you said it was, there was a, it wasn't a restaurant.
It's not a restaurant now, it's not a restaurant now.
Was it a pastry department?
But what, it headed there at one time.
I know, but that was twenty years ago.
You know, we did the same thing down at Encore.
Encore did, retail space, they're gonna put in a coffee shop, we made him come in here.
And we did it to the purple tomato.
Because they were serving food. He's not serving food, all, all your service is coffee, right?
He's serving coffee, and he has Danish, so that's where, couple of those. So you're gonna have no.
Are they cooking, are they cooking Danish onsite?
No. Yeah. But are you bringing Danish to sell, because they're, they didn't do that either.
Yeah, we had this guy over here, we did that, because he was gonna bring something.
That's right.
Brewery there.
Yeah, across the street, if, I mean, you know, if you need, do you need a food service license from the state?
Do I need a first food service license? Yeah, I have to, I have to file for it.
Then they're gonna, yeah.
It, it, that.
And he has twenty-four seats.
Restaurant usage.
So I would, so Jim, okay.
Well, let's.
But it's not, I don't think it's a big deal.
No, I, right, I mean, you know.
I don't see. What?
Excuse me, Adam, we haven't required a survey, I mean, just basically something on, you know, graph paper and.
But then he's already got plans, good plans.
I mean, it's just kind of a thing like this.
Well, I get, I mean, that's just chicken scratch, that'll be glorified in a big way, you know?
Yeah.
Okay, but again.
Site plan review.
It's not a deal.
Right, I mean, we can do something like this for some, a small project like this.
Okay.
This is what Encore brought in-ish, you know?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's right, that's, that's nothing compared to the finished, you know, because I could, I could do better than that for the state, you know, so, um.
And Brent already has plans for the building.
Yeah, but I mean.
Brent can come in, Brent can come in and see you to get the, and, and you can help figure out what the usable square footage is for public, taking on all the other stuff, and then we'll, we'll know that, that will tell you what the parking requirements are.
Yeah, we get to, to Carol and figure out the parking lot, parking ahead of time.
Brent, you want, you bring my way to take, and just go zip, 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 you got.
Show you free tomorrow?
Possibly.
Sounds like it, one day.
I mean, we'll get you in and out of here in one meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's no problem for, yeah, we're gonna measure tomorrow at this point.
I think that works, they'll work better once you go.
I mean, technically, you could apply for waiver, but it'd be the same, I mean, I think it'd take you the same amount of time.
Oh, yeah.
And you might not want to go, I'm sorry.
Don't, we don't need to show up, change the time, when, you know what I mean?
Right, I mean, you might apply for waiver, not get it, then you'd have to treat anyway.
Yeah, no, it's not a big deal.
I mean, we still, you still have to do the notice, but that's not a lot of stuff over there.
Right.
You have to do the notice of the payment. What could you?
Do you have an application, right?
Yeah.
Is that, so is this a minimal impact application, or what does that application look like?
There'll be lots of things that will not apply, we'll just say, law average.
Ooh, yeah. Will this require kind of a walk, but yet?
Sorry.
A sidewalk, but, no.
No.
We all know where it is.
Right, the, the layout, right?
Yeah.
Kind of, the physical space, the drawing. The draft will be enough.
We have the, the, from the, you have to read.
All right, any other questions for us?
What I'll do is, I'm gonna bring the Asbill.
Yeah.
That's, the building is exactly where it is.
Okay.
The measurements are all been done, every single space has been delineated, in his particular space, we'll do a metaphor floor plan that shows exactly how it is right now.
There you go.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Okay.
Yo, Joe, you mentioned, I heard you whisper, how many seats did you calculate on that?
The what?
How many seats did you calculate on my little dra- draft there?
Twenty-two, I counted.
What's that?
Twenty-two, I counted.
That's where it should be, twenty-two to twenty, twenty-four max.
I'll use twenty-four.
Yeah.
I didn't want to give, now you need six parking spaces, so.
Yeah. We don't, to make sure all the same.
I didn't mess.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, what else do we have?
Thank you very much.
Good luck, guys.
Thank you.
We'll see you again soon.
Appreciate you guys' time.
Go do it. Sorry you were so.
Sticking it out.
Sorry you were last.
How simple you move again.
What's that?
How simple you move, we move out of it again.
What are we looking at now, this level?
Hopefully not, not this handsome.
On a board, it's like, I've known you every four years.
Yeah. Sometimes you gotta. Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
All right.
Thanks.
See you, Brent.
Stop at the coffee after November first.
I don't drink coffee.
Well.
I've just told Paul, I haven't had a cup in my whole life.
I'm sorry.
Has never had one.
It seems like, it seems like we're going ways to, to address this tonight by the application, we, I mean, by the. This guy we had tonight.
So I mean. Have, has everybody read this letter?
From Green?
Yeah.
On a board, yeah, I mean.
I mean, it seems like, seems like a lot of money, just to redo the ordinance.
I don't know, need to redo the ordinance, I mean, this guy came in tonight, we, we made it work.
Right, I don't, personally, I don't think, I mean, so, thousand, how many pages is the, uh?
Green's talking about workforce housing, and that, that's, was the basis of tonight's application, so, not application, but, um.
Who is it, that's true, no.
Saying the ordinance is a hundred pages, it's like five hundred bucks a page. Get fifty thousand dollars grant. Up to. I need to say that.
Yeah, I know, like I said, we made this work tonight.
Uh, no, we didn't. I mean, we could have given him approval tonight if we had done this change that we're suggesting in the ordinance a year ago. So we're gonna wait till the next one, and say, oh, wait till next March, wait till next March, we can't, we can't approve anything, but we're basically, instead of looking at the ordinance and saying, what should we do, be doing, with letting people come in and, and, and give us a situation that makes perfect sense, but it doesn't meet our ordinance, and then go and change the ordinance, I mean, we keep doing that.
I was reading about that.
Did that, what they have to do?
On the housing shortage.
What's that?
Too much litigation.
It's one problem we have now.
Housing development, we should make them put in a forty house for their employees. Yeah, you know it.
How do we do that, Joe?
Anyhow, you can do it.
Now, how do we do it, there's plenty of ways.
Well, they had the dorms up, the dorms up there.
We had dorms, and one mom took them out, they wanted to make money.
But that, you know, that wasn't anything that was a town level.
Town, they don't make them do that.
No. It's just something that. We sold out their billing applications, they don't kill them, we, we, why should we accommodate them out of our tax money for, for money they're gonna spend, make money in town, leak money out of town, take it out of town. They don't leave much money in town, these big hotels rent a room.
Okay, we have the subject of.
They want to have employees.
Okay, if we, if we have someone look at our ordinance, and then give us, all they're gonna give us are suggestions, they're not gonna tell us what we have to do. They're gonna give us suggestions of how we can improve the ordinance to accommodate people like the guy that sat in front of us tonight.
Right.
And then, and then, we can vote on whether we want to bring it to the town, and then the town can vote on whether you want to.
Six years ago, I provided a whole stack of, yeah, town blew me off, these are all from the Department of Housing in Concord, I mean, they went to.
And this is looking at all of the regulations, not just housing.
No, what I'm saying is, he's talking about. Like, if you have economy and development, they allow fifty units.
Right.
And it's down in this regulation, you can allow another four-five dedicated to town employees, first pack, they will have carpet for my, my accountants, cheaper, the entire type is different, but they cannot sell for, for big profits, and to go to another employee for the town.
Okay, that's a good idea, we have to codify it somehow.
But with all the, they, they codify it, they don't know how we can do it, I brought on the data, the plan board, everyone's looking at it.
You have the right idea. Hey, Jim, can we put this on another agenda, I mean.
All right, let's.
And, and discuss.
It's ten o'clock.
You know, the, the applications are accepted until June of twenty-twenty-three, whenever the money comes out, so we have the whole time.
All right, Carol, what do we have on the twelve? Twelve, the next meeting.
Um.
We have a subdivision over here.
Joe, I mean, Brent?
No, since the, we're gonna have the application, or set up the list.
It'll be the second meeting, and I'm.
The second meeting. And I'm waiting for Alex Ray.
Yeah, I saw him up there the other day.
Okay, so that's.
State measures.
So he doesn't have his paperwork, and he's not gonna make the twelve either.
So if we put this.
Let's put this on the twelve, but, you know, let's take it home and read it.